And working session. And we do council, we do have city attorney, and we do have several staff, and we have some visitors as well. So first thing on the agenda is for the city manager to discuss the consent agenda. Sorry?
I'm sorry.
Oh, consent agenda items. So, uh, Theresa.
Item on our consent, item 4A. 4A is our minutes from April 29th town hall, tall hall, May, April 24th meetings, May 4th town hall meeting, uh, city council regular meeting, and May 12th, 2021, city council special meeting. Uh, next item, item B, that's 4B. It's the renovation and expansion service rejection deal. I think we've talked about this. The service center renovation and expansion is a $2.4 million project approved by voters in the 2008 bond. Uh, our consultants of the projects have created a construction specifications for bidding. We released it on January 2021 through public purchase to several entities. The city received eight bids prior to the closing on May 28th, 2021. Was worse than he had experienced in his other tank rehab. Due to the impact to the water storage, the public works director feels the required structural repairs to be key water infrastructure constitutes an emergency. The $1.15 million in authorization requested will come from the utility fund either through the American recovery funds, which we should be receiving within the next 14 business days, or by pushing a few projects to the next year, which could also be covered through the American recovery as we start that discussion. Uh, FY, there are several projects that we looked at that we would use to cover that. That is it.
Yeah. Just one comment. I was very surprised to see those pictures of the insides of those tanks. And, uh, I think Mr. Ramey designated that as an emergency repair.
Yes.
Is, is the right thing to do. Yeah, Greg.
Just a quick question since Mr. Ramey is not here. I'd like to ask Jackie, um, does this, do these repairs entail cutting out sections of the tank and structural elements within the tank and replacing them?
Yes, sir, they do. They absolutely do. It cannot be remediated. Let's be replaced.
All right.
Thank you. And then remediation and repair is still less than having to replace, from what I read, it's less than R and R, you know, destruction and new construction. So, yeah, it's a heavy price tag, but it's our water supply.
That's correct, and it will guarantee.
Yeah, it is our water supply.
Thirty-year.
Yeah, I saw that, thirty-year guarantee of the repairs.
What's the timeline, Jack? What's the timeline?
The timeline is, uh, for the design because we need design improvements, and we do have our consulting engineers with us tonight, RJN. Um, and it's my understanding that in order to finalize the design upon approval of this contract, it will take less than a month.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Do you have any, these are the gentlemen from RJN. Do you have anything to add for us as council to understand timeline? I mean, big question on timeline. Do you have anything to just give us, you know, like a Gantt chart, verbal Gantt chart, 30 seconds to land?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jim Janks, I'm with RJN Group.
Want to stand up?
Sure, certainly.
Masks are making it hard to hear.
And talk loud, sorry.
And you can drop your mask. Stay six feet away and drop your mask.
Thank you. My name is Jim Janks. I'm with RJN Group, uh, project manager, uh, very involved with the project. And, uh, to, to answer your question, we've already engaged our structural engineer expert, uh, who's already immersed himself in the project at, at the release to scope out.
Is that a pun? Immerse?
He, he's, uh, he's thoroughly familiarized himself with the North Tank, been inside it. Uh, and so, yes, Jackie is correct that, uh, the design, we expect to complete that within the tone off. Now, one, uh, challenge, especially here lately, is, uh, time, lead time involved with ordering, uh, fabrication and delivery of steel, structural steel. Our design, uh, our structural expert is, uh, cognizant of that, and we're here in design, uh, to basically utilize as much as possible the more readily available materials. Uh, he's thinking those, the lead time involved with those is three weeks versus. And then we have the timeline involved with the contractor, who would have to have a subcontractor because tank painting contractors mainly just last repaint tanks. And when there's structural work like this, they have to bring in a sub, and they usually have several that they work with. But it would be a matter of deploying that, that company and bringing them up. So, uh, and then there's the timeline for the work itself, which, uh, would be extensive and have to be very carefully done so that the existing structure is still supported while the main members are replaced. So that answers.
So we will lose some capacity of water. I would guess as these tank work is phased, we lose 13 million, something, and then we lose the 3 million, or?
No, uh, actually, while the tank is being, um, uh, renovated, it will be out of service. So basically, we have a 2 million gallon tank, which is the North Tank, and then we have a 2 and 1/2 million gallon tank, which is the South Tank. So we're not taking them both out.
Right.
At the same time. We're working on them one at a time.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you very much.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with this. Any, is this any modern technology going with this now, or is it the same thing we had before when we just upgraded?
Um, it's, uh, the, there's, there's nothing on a large scale that would be new, all the improvements we, you know, current with, um, with the current codes, uh, some of which I, you know, have, have changed since the 1983 and 1976 when these tanks were built. Um, some, the, the basic configuration structurally will be similar, uh, in that it'll, it's, it's a center support ring with some intermediate columns around it. So, uh, nothing radically different, just retrofitting in, uh, new structural members of that meet current codes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Matt, did it?
Go ahead.
Mr. Harvey.
My question is, how often are these inspected? I, I don't know if this is more of a Jackie question, but how often are these inspected? And, well, I'll just leave it there for now.
Oh, yes, sir. They're actually inspected by divers annually, but the, uh, area that we're addressing now was not, is not visible, you know, to divers. So that's why we did not realize that we had this extensive corrosion. But what we have determined that we will do is for those, uh, tanks that are similar configuration, we'll drain them and inspect them periodically, and then in addition to that, we will rehab them more often than what we have done.
Learned our last word.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Patrick.
Well, uh, council member Macring has stole my thunder.
You never did.
And I'm sorry, sir, that I do not, uh, recognize you, but I do recognize Kerry Stewart, Department Director of Water Utilities.
Did you want me to make any statements, or you just acknowledged my presence? It's my pleasure to be here, sir.
You're doing, you're doing real well.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, I'll project manager covered everything, so unless there's further questions, it's my pleasure to be here.
Well, we appreciate you being here because this is a big ticket item for us. And, uh, it's serious, you know? When I looked at those pictures, I went, man, I didn't know this is kind of big of a deal. So we thank you for being here tonight. Sir, giving us your expertise, carrying us forward on this entire project. Appreciate it. Okay. So that finished off the consent items.
Yes, sir.
Uh, then we'll move on to briefings and presentations. First one that we have is item 2A, discussion of kudzu mitigation on private property. Mr. Koops, you put this on the agenda, you're concerned, please.
This is one. My understanding is there will be a staff presentation on this.
Jackie? Mayor and council's introduction to this, uh, Mr. Koops and I've talked about this. What we are looking for is just to give you an update, but most importantly is, uh, looking at some direction from the council on whether we need to take a more aggressive approach from an ordinance standpoint on ensuring that people are maintaining this so that it does not get out of control.
Honorable mayor, distinguished members of the Duncanville City Council, I'm Jaclyn Colton, Assistant Director of Public Works, and I am here to talk about kudzu mitigation on private property. And just a little background on kudzu, it's an invasive vine, it's very rapidly growing, and it will overtake whatever it comes in contact with. It's very heavy, and, uh, it is not illegal to have, but it is definitely not something that you would want on your property or nearby property. It breaks branches, it uproots trees by the sheer force of its weight. And as I've indicated, uh, the vine may extend 32 to 100 feet. It can grow, you know, uh, 12, uh, 12 inches in, in a month. So, you know, especially during summertime. So the Public Works Department was made aware of this problem in June of this year. Uh, there is a resident on Falling Leaves Drive who reported that he had kudzu growing behind his house. And of course, quite naturally, he would be very concerned because it is rapidly growing, and it had even spread to the adjacent property. So the, uh, city has taken several opportunities to meet with the resident to determine what his concerns were and to actually see exactly what was going on. So in the meantime, we were contacted by councilman Koops, who wanted staff to look into further, uh, actions that the city might be able to take as a result of this kudzu. And so basically, the city does not have staff to address it internally, you know, to mitigate the kudzu, which would require a combination of mechanical, uh, you know, cutting and herbicides. But due to where it's located, like in the creek, then herbicides could be off of the table totally. So that's basically, you know, the, the background in a nutshell.
Patrick, currently Harvey's here.
Is it native to Texas?
No, it is not native to Texas. No, sir, it was transplanted here.
Transplanted here. Who?
No, no, we know who that person was.
It doesn't need, it doesn't need to be by who. Let me give you a little background, turn of personal experience. When I was transferred out to South Carolina, to Fort Jackson, there was this giant stuff all over trees. Turned out to be kudzu. It's in North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Mississippi, Alabama, and it's uncontrollable. They have tried burning it out. They tried, I mean, it's, you know, there is no way, there's no physical way that a state or even a county or a city can control this puppy because of what I've seen. Now, Greg, and you're, you know.
Well, I mentioned, uh, because I, as I traveled through those states you mentioned, I got very interested in it because I thought, looks like it's coming this way. Uh, birds, uh, droppings containing seeds from that is one of the main sources of it moving on to other places. But secondly, it was brought here intentionally, and I guess the 40s or the 50s, to actually work as a fast-growing landscape up the side of, uh, road embankments to.
Yeah, highways.
Prevent erosion. So, uh, I didn't know the long-term effects of it.
It was somebody's good idea at the time.
That's right.
You know, the only thing, and I'm just, I'm not a agricultural expert by any means, but maybe somebody could call this, the property owner, call Texas A&M and their agricultural section and say, does Texas A&M know of any way to control this aside, you know, I'm thinking, grab a bottle of Clorox and spray Clorox on the thing and try and control it that way. So it's almost like trying to control bamboo.
You're spot on with that because, uh, 10 years ago, A&M was researching it heavily, so that might be the place that would be a good resource.
Yeah.
So the, yeah, so the property owner, uh, he has looked into some of those, uh, options, and, and he's ready and willing to talk to anybody with the city. They're willing to hear him. Uh, and he did want to clarify that this isn't a situation where he just wants the city to come in and clean up a mess in his yard because he's controlling it in his yard, but he sees it going into adjacent properties. And again, it's, it's not just any other vine, it's, it's, it's an invasive, aggressive plant, so, uh, and he said after, after the freeze is when it really starts to just get out of control, and he noticed that it was growing that 12 inches a day. So he, he's willing to talk to us about it, yeah.
Yeah. It, it's terrible. It is, it is a terrible, terrible plant.
And as far, as far as I know, that, I mean, I didn't, this is the only place I've ever seen it, the city, so it may be a situation if we can try to nip it in the bud, uh, before it gets out of hand. Because he said it's, it's, oh, off to the right is where it's starting to grow up over to his neighbor's house, and they don't care.
Yeah, well, I'm seeing, uh, Mr. Hamilton back there, you know, Superintendent Parks. He could.
Yes, sir.
Make a comment, or maybe call Texas A&M and see if they've made any progress on research from 10 years ago.
Well, I have looked into it, and it is a extremely aggressive, as, as everyone has admitted, at up to 12 inches a day in growth, and you can get 100 feet long. The roots are tremendously deep as well. They can go up to 16 feet deep. Um, and you've got to get the roots, so you cut it about two inches above the ground. Um, it does, it's a deciduous, so it does lose its leaves in the fall, so you can perhaps get a little bit of control on the tender vegetation as it's coming out. But it is a herbicide type of treatment that once you cut those, uh, you want to put a, uh, mix, like a 50% of herbicide directly on the, and the vine will be that thick as well. And so you're basically painting it on that to absorb that in. So, uh, it's a process, but it can be, but it's a multi-year process, too. You have to stay after it. So, I mean, we can certainly advise them, you know, based on our knowledge.
We can, city manager, we could put something to the, the water bill or something else.
Absolutely. I think what we're, we're always looking for information to share, so we can do that.
Okay. All right.
Look, actually.
Okay to move on, Mr.? Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, actually, I was going to address city codes which prohibit, uh, something like this, but, um, it sounds like we're all on the same page as for it's, it not being, you know, allowed in the city, so, uh.
One of the things that the council may want to consider is instructing us to make it a, a landscaping element to introduce.
Can't plant it. Can't bring it in, yeah.
And bring it in and have it introduced. I mean, we've got to deal with what's there now, but I certainly don't want someone to go to Home Depot or something and buy a plant or a pallet of it and plant it, so.
So is it necessary to identify kudzu in this ordinance, or that pretty well covers it?
That, well, you know, it's, uh.
Objection on the on-site.
Usually the eye of the beholder, as your lawyer, I would tell you, the more specific we are, the better off you are. Can bring it back.
So you're recommending that we add kudzu to this?
Yes.
For an example, not in, kudzu, for example, not an inclusive list.
Right. Exactly. There may be other things out there that we could add, and it would say, these plants and other noxious or nuisance plants or vegetation.
Okay, city manager, you got that down?
If I may, it is listed, it was listed in 1997 on the federal noxious weed list. So if we go in there and, you know, refer to that, then we could, uh, use that coverage.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you.
But it was not prohibited. There are some states, I think Illinois, which has prohibited it, period. So, okay.
Prohibited all day long, all night long, they can stop it. It's just a nasty, nasty piece of thing, so.
Okay, so.
Okay. Item B, discussion on modifying current solid waste collection contract.
Was there any addition, is there any part of the presentation?
What, we did have some questions prepared, but, um, we received the direction unless you all have further direction for staff.
But thank you for, for looking into that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think we got it. Thanks, Jackie.
Okay.
Okay. So item B, discussion on modifying current solid waste collection contract.
Using carts with solid waste collection contract, this is an item that was requested by council member Koops. Okay, our current level of service for solid waste collection is bags twice a week with recycling bin once a week, which open-top recycling bin, and then bulk and brush, 10 cubic yards twice a month. The cost, the contractual cost to the city is currently $18.48 per house. The rate is reevaluated once a year, uh, based upon the Consumer Price Index. Republic will send us a request, generally sometime within the August, early September timeframe. Okay, so this issue, uh, has been brought again to our attention because of the amount of trash that we're seeing in our city. Trash which has been attributed to trash bags and, you know, scattered litter. So, uh, one of the options that we were asked to look at is the possibility of, you know, distributing carts for residents to put their trash in, which would contain it and then, uh, address, you know, some of our trash issues. And then we also know that during the recent, uh, storm, Yuri, which occurred in February, when Republic was unable to pick up our trash because of treacherous road conditions, then trash accumulated aside, you know, the street, and it was unsightly within our city. And, uh, it just, you know, created a, a problem, unavoidable problem because of the nature of the trash, uh, collection that we have in place. Okay, we have talked to Republic, you know, on several occasions regarding, uh, a possible move from carts to tra, from, uh, trash bags to carts. And so, uh, based upon their preliminary information in which they're still investigating, uh, we believe that there will be a no-cost change for this service. And so what we're talking about are 96-gallon carts for trash. And then, uh, with, you know, recycling bins, no change, and of course, bulk and brush, no change.
Jack, I'm saying, you're saying no cost, but it's no cost because we moved to one week versus two weeks?
Uh, yes, 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 sir. But then, too, they're looking into, and Republic is, is here with us tonight, and they're actually, you know, looking to, uh, providing us with, um, further defined cost information.
So in my clarification of Mark's statement, you meant twice a week pickup versus once a week pickup?
Uh-huh. Yes.
And that's a cost-effective balance so that we don't have an increased cost. If I understand what you're saying correctly.
Yeah, that's less trips, yes, sir. Less, less trips in the city. But we do not have concrete figures for that right now. They're, they're, um, looking into providing us with that information or estimates of how much it would cost.
Okay.
Okay. But there is a hiccup. The carts are not readily available.
Yeah, see, yeah.
Yes. So, um, I guess the current wait time is like eight to 10 months. And so, um, and then there would need to be a contractual amendment and the, the whole nine yards. So, um, that is what we.
Now, I remember pretty specifically when the council looked at this renewal or the actual letting of this contract, there are some locations in our city in which the carts would not be possible to locate because of getting the truck, getting out. It's still going to use the truck with, with the car or y'all manual dumping these things? What's the intent? I'm talking Joanna, uh, with, with Republic, I'm talking about her. If you was Dan.
The intent is to use the, um, the intent is to use the, continue using the rearload machines.
Okay.
Um, with a tipper on the back.
Okay. So there would be no locations that the citizen would still have to do a bag, they could, every citizen in the city could accommodate the cart because of the location. Very good. Thank you. Greg?
Well, I'm just gonna say that in spite of, uh, of Ms. Colton's, uh, reference to where our trash comes from, uh, I dealt in that field for many years, and I can tell you, most of our trash doesn't come from that. That is a problem when animals get into trash bags. Our trash, citywide, is us.
Disrespectful.
For someone like us, absolutely. That's, that's, so this isn't going to solve our trash problem by any means. Secondly, if you drive around, and I'd suggest if you haven't, that each one of you do go into a city where they have these carts, it's fine if you live in an alley because they're out of sight, out of mind. But it would change the whole nature of your street to have these things laying on their sides, knocked over, halfway laying in the street, all day while people are at work. And they do that. All you gotta do is go to the neighborhoods and visit a few over, of course, over a few days, and you'll see what people have to look at every day. And, uh, I've got a problem with that. So, and lastly, especially in my district, we've got people that live down to what I call the hole. I don't see how they're gonna pull these things up to street side.
Comments of that effect were made by individuals from District 5. I said, there's no way I'm dragging a cart up and down with my 30-foot incline.
Yeah, so those are just my points, uh, and I would definitely be opposed to this effort.
With some modification, you could still, citizens could still opt out of the cart and still do the bags. It's still, like in your district where they, where it's hilly, they can still take the bag up to the street.
Well, that, that's true, um, and that would be, uh, fine if that were my only issue, but I'm not, uh, from the aesthetic standpoint, uh, go to Lancaster, drive around Lancaster and look at during the day, while people are at work, what happens to those, and they're out there all day long. Uh, I didn't buy into my neighborhood to look at that two days a week, or one day a week in this case, not in one.
So you feel the same way? Yes, Patrick?
Which is why I would like ample opportunity for us to receive input from our neighbors on both sides to, uh, accurately gauge, uh, support for making any change. I remember the last time we did it, uh, I'm still, uh, feeling some of those.
Well, it's, it's worth looking at, yeah.
Yeah, and just, just right along those lines, so, you know, kind of what, uh, you're saying, Greg, that, uh, I haven't seen any of that, uh, the, the people that are coming to me are seeing the trash that's being ripped out of the bag. We recognize that's not gonna completely solve the, the little problem, but, uh, I would have, uh, be fine just hearing both sides of that again because I wasn't around for any of those conversations.
Well, I'm sure we'll have another healthy discussion about that. Not for tonight, yeah.
I think it was kind of, we, we had some good, we did have some good discussion. I think it was limited on not getting enough discussion from more of our wider range on the citizens. And so I hope by the time Alex or marketing would have some avenue to poll more citizens than we did before. And so we know, we know we made one decision and we came back and reversed that, but I'd like to hear more of our consensus from more citizens, use a, a better polling system.
We're several months away from anything on this, so there's, there's time to work that. Yeah, Don?
And so, kind of along in what, what Mr. Cook said, is that, but I will, I will say that we had town halls, we advertised, we did that, and then it's kind of like, okay, so this, is this my question? Is this another town hall meeting as well? And, and, uh, you know, because it's like, the overwhelming majority that I've received comments from were just one that, let's keep it as close as possible as what it was.
Yeah.
For me, that was an overwhelming majority.
Yeah, that's what I received.
I do have one question for Republic. Is it possible, I guess it's two questions. One, could, could it not be, could it not be, uh, polled in, in one, one part of our city, just to, pollinate one part of our city to see how it works and how it looks? Or does it now mean all or none, or nothing? Or does it now mean all or nothing? It could be piloted as well.
Because we're not using a side-load truck to do that, we're utilizing the rear-load truck. So, there's no real modification to the schedule that it is now. Yeah, we could absolutely pilot a particular neighborhood if you wanted to do that.
So, so I understand that we can look at citizens' feedback. Then citizens can actually drive their own neighborhood, our own city, and get an opportunity to look at the pilot situation. It'll give them a better idea to say yes or no, if when we get to that point.
Okay.
I distinctly remember that half the problem was citizens putting their trash out the night before.
Still happens.
Yeah, which is most of the problem.
It was some, I don't know about most, but it occurs. I mean, in my neighborhood, I drive down the street on a, on a Monday night and there's already stuff out there. Or on a Sunday night, because we go Monday, Thursday. Yeah, and, you know, to Greg's point about where's this tr- this trash coming from? Last Saturday, I saw a bag sitting in the street and I, I couldn't stand it, so I pulled into the Holy Spirit Catholic Church. And it was, it was a bag this big, literally, with greasy wings and french fries that somebody just put on the street. And that ends up on Danieldale. So, it's not somebody, it's not a neighborhood trash problem. It's somebody disrespectful of community property and anything else, they just throw trash. And, and, you know, this, this is a subject that came up at coffee with the mayor as well. And I was very straightforward, I said to those people, I said, this is a matter of the heart. People throwing trash in our city and trashing up Danieldale, because it's a main thoroughfare. It's a conduit from sixty-seven going all the way into the city of Dallas. And if there's any street in our city that has more trash on the right of way, it's probably Danieldale. But we can't catch the culprits, but it's a matter of disrespect for our city. And, and it's, it's, it's a matter of the heart. That's what I asked the individual. I said, could you come up with, with a, an address for us as a city to put into some kind of publication where you touch people's hearts and say, have more respect? And she said, well, I probably could do that. I said, you got a job.
Well, I, I think the respect really comes from a mass campaign for citywide.
Well, that's what I'm asking, and that's what I asked this individual to do, was draft something for our use as a concerned citizen that we can publish to touch the hearts of our citizens and even those that don't live here. To say, would you please have a little more respect for our city because you're trashing it up? So, do we have any guidance? You got enough guidance, don't you?
Yes, sir, we, we need to do a survey.
Yeah.
And then-
I'm glad Republic's here, you're hearing all the comments, so deeply involved in this. We appreciate Scott and Joanna, we appreciate you hearing it. Yeah, Jeremy?
So, one concern that some citizens have brought up is the fact that, right now, it's, we can put out unlimited trash and if we go to the carts, it's gonna limit how much they put out. Now, does, I mean, do we produce more garbage than other cities, or is that just?
I don't.
You're asking me?
Uh, or her.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that we do, however, I'll defer to Republic. I think we, we produce a normal amount of trash, but we'll let the trash experts-
The tonnages are normal, pretty much. They're pretty consistent across most of the cities in the metroplex. There's none that are changing the tons. But I will say with the ninety-six gallon carts, they do, they do hold two hundred and fifty pounds of trash each week.
And then there is also the option of getting a second cart if you need it.
Correct, and if I may, there is, I think we did a study on the tons. Per household, I think we were just under forty pounds per week as an average. So, the cart would definitely, across the board, support that amount of trash.
Okay. We've got twenty minutes, folks, a little less than that actually, if we get out there and start at seven. So, we need to expedite matters. So, item C, discussion on how staff monitors performance of city solid waste collection contractor.
Okay, this item was requested by Councilmember Cooks. So, the complaint rate that we use to determine how we're doing as far as collection of trash is the number of complaints in a month divided by the number of households, based on approximately eleven thousand households. And so both Republic and the city staff takes complaints regarding trash and they, we both track it. Okay, based upon our current information, our complaint rate is less than one percent, which is pretty good. But we're always working to try and improve, you know, our collection rate and to respond to complaints and to identify maybe causes for complaints if we're missing the same household or area. You know, we, we wanna get that right. So, we're, we're always, you know, looking at ways to improve our complaint rate and our collection rate. And then we're working with Republic to address, or to get information, number one, on wait times to their, to their call centers. We've heard that that could be a problem, but we're awaiting data related to that. And then hangups so that we can get a total picture of the amount of complaint calls that we are receiving or, you know, or could receive. So, that's as far as what we're tracking there. And so basically, this is a chart that shows our, that shows our complaint rate by month. Since October of nineteen, our goal of one percent is the red dash line. And you can see that there's only been two occasions where we have exceeded our one percent complaint goal. And that was in February during the ice storm and then in June of this year.
I have a question, and this is to Republic. But regarding monthly complaints, obviously you would have had a spike in that time in Storm Yuri. So, what would your, how would you say your monthly complaint rate was at that, at that time? Because, I mean, everybody in Duncanville is affected, but I'm sitting there looking at three and a half percent and that's still not horrible. It's not where we want it, but considering everything, and the roads were bad and it's a matter of just getting it started up, because you see it already dropped back down. But I'd ask you, is, what, what kind of complaint rate were you getting? Where does Duncanville fit in line with, with other cities on this?
It's about the same. We have a pretty consistent rate among our, you know, across all of our cities. February is, of course, the anomaly in every one of them.
Yeah, during Yuri, we received over three hundred and something, you know, complaints.
So, I, I can appreciate the, the number of one percent of having it there. I guess what I'm still looking for, however, is going back to what we talked about before. I'm seeing percentages and I'm seeing numbers, but I'm not, I'm not seeing, of course, this chart, but I'm not seeing how we are tracking these complaints. And is it consistent with if I call the city to complain or if I'm calling Republic to complain? I'm looking for the form that we use to track that. From what I understand from our last meeting, is that was going to be delivered to us at some point and I'm still waiting to see it. And that's kind of why I keep adding this back to the agenda because I'm waiting to see the form, how we're tracking this all the way through. At some point, someone's gonna test that and I wanna make sure that test comes through correctly. So, I call the city, but there's nowhere I can find it on the tracking form of the city or Republic. Or, and so I just wanna make sure we can see what measure we're really using other than just a number.
You're talking the nature of the complaint, too?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
More than like, what was the cause of the complaint, not just our complaint?
Right.
Yes, sir, we actually have worksheets where we track each complaint by address and by type of complaint. And so both the city and Republic track complaints in that manner. So, that's information that we can provide to the council if-
No, no offense, I've kind of asked for that, no offense, but three times, if somebody would show me that or if we could see it, because I'm still looking to see how we track that.
City manager just, you know, not necessarily for next council meeting to compile the data, if you agree to.
Have you guys provided that to us?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
It's with Mr. Ramey?
It is, it is. Yes.
Can I have the council number tomorrow?
I just wanted to note on that as well. I know that's taking our total complaints versus the total households for the month, but then when you look at the amount of services, essentially we're servicing each home fourteen times a month when you include bulk recycling and twice-a-week trash. So, in essence, there's fourteen chances of failing that service level every month. So, again, these numbers are based off just eleven thousand homes.
No, no, and I can appreciate the number unless, unless I'm in that number. If I'm in that number, it's like, oh, it's, it's, boom, that's a problem. It's a problem, yes, right. So, but I just need to be able to, to, like, this week I only had, I had three complaints and I had to forward on to the city. And I wanna feel comfortable enough to tell constituents what I'm looking at and we're looking at the tracking system. So, it means nothing to them except what I'm saying, what is them. But I like to see it for myself.
Greg, you have a comment?
I'll be very brief, and I don't need an answer to this right now. But coincidentally, I got a complaint on my way home today. A constituent called me and apparently a portion of her street was missed today, yesterday, sorry. And when she called to notify Republic later in the day, their response was that they'd have to wait until Thursday to get it picked up. So, obviously that leaves those residents with choices. Do we go to drag it back in or get in trouble with code enforcement because we're leaving it out? So, later on, I'd like to talk about how we can come to resolutions about those things that don't leave these citizens as innocent victims of a unfortunate mistake.
Interestingly, I have two citizen comments on this subject. And my intention was, I can't talk about them now because I gotta comply with what's on the agenda. And those citizen comments were provided to here for city council meeting. So, I checked with Mr. Hager. I'm going to read those citizen comments on the Republic problem and I'm gonna call upon the Republic representatives to respond. We as council can't respond to citizen comments, but I, since the representatives for Republic are here and I've already briefed them, you know, be prepared. So, I will read those comments. I think one of them is those, Greg. And then Republic will have an opportunity to publicly explain some of their issues.
And I'm not sure how the chart's gonna look, but in my mind, I'm picturing city manager, how the police department breaks down categories on crime. And so that would help us as well to know, is it just a miss, is it a miss? Did you miss my street? Did I call you more than once? So, just that type of break. So, thank you.
Okay, we've got D E and F to cover. And I'd really like to cover all three of them because I think all three of them are important. Mr. Cooks, independently, they've created partnership with Dr. Alliance Club.
Yeah, I'll just go real quick on this. This is something I couldn't bring up. I just, all I'm requesting here is for the council to agree to have a license agreement and maybe the city attorney can help us through this, a license agreement between us and Alliance Club that we continue to practice that we're already doing with them, but have something documented and writing documented for us. I'm not sure what you referred to on that city attorney that we could do to, what you could recommend to help us have something in writing, because right now we have nothing.
You can go to license agreement with them.
I can't hear you, Mr. Hager.
You can do a license agreement for them to use street. I've done that for a number of other communities. And setting forth who does what, when, who does traffic control, who does parade floats, how long you got the street for and what the terms and conditions is.
This is an item of Mr. Cooks's concern. Frankly, it's not an item for me to, to be concerned with. I don't know about the rest of the council because what we're talking about now is engaging our city attorney to draft a license. The purpose, I understand the purpose, to document how Alliance Club puts on a parade and we participate as a city. They are in control of it. They take the applications, they take the money and the city rents golf carts for city council to participate. So, Mr. Cooks, I do understand your concern. I, I don't agree that we need a formal license for it, but it's gonna be up to council as a team to decide, do we engage city attorney for the drafting of something?
And so just think about it, think about it as well. Is this, this is Alliance Club today, it could be somebody else tomorrow. And how, how we currently set the precedent is, we have everyone set already for every other organization. Is that correct? We have partnership, we have license, so why would this be any different?
Example, if you wanted to use a park for something, we would do a license agreement with them to use a park. I think what we did with barbecue and blues.
Special event.
Yeah, they have a special event permit.
So, this is not, this is not a very difficult thing to do. We just formalize it and we've already been doing, having something documented.
Mr. Hager, at our next council meeting, could you talk to the city manager maybe and give us some thoughts on this next time?
Absolutely.
Just to give it for direction for tonight. Yeah, Mr. McManay?
Sorry, Gary, man. I'm seeing Mr. Hager. Mr. Hager, when the Alliance Club applies for the parade, they, they get the permit from the city and they're issued a permit and they're told to follow certain rules and guidelines. So, for instance, a simple one-page application is now about a four or five-page application because it includes all city rules and guidelines along with it. So, do you already have something based upon that?
I will look at the permit application and what the permit's issued and what the conditions are and answer that question after I put some ideas in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Department of Director, an office director for the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation is representing for the city of Duncanville. Our current representative on that board is ex-council member Johnette Jamison. And I did discuss this with her because the, the bylaws of that corporation do not require an elected official, only representative of the city who's a resident of the city. And she has been on it for several years. She participates in all the board meetings. She's been trained in how to handle those, those issues. And she would like to remain on it if the city so desires. Now, problem is, her term of six years is-
It could be, so-
It could be expired. In fact, I asked her today if she knew when she was appointed. She didn't even know when she was appointed, so.
May I speak?
Yes.
I, I spoke to Ms. Deena because she actually served on with me. I think I saw something where council took action. It was initially Richard Sunland and then we moved her as the primary because Richard did not reside here. But it was, she served with her. So, I think we need to, we have to at least go back because it does state that no director shall serve in excess of six years. And I, I know I've been gone for four years and she's been gone for at least five or six years from her previous position where she served on it. So, I just need to figure out when council took action, unless you know, see.
I don't think I do. I doubt if it was six, I doubt, I doubt if it's been six years because we were on those lines, that transition. So, I'm thinking at least, it's only probably been at least two years.
If we can put this to bed, if, if it hasn't been six years, are y'all okay with, with Johnette remaining?
I am, if there's anyone else around the council.
I, I am, I am.
If anyone else on the council wants to pick her up.
I have no objection.
Yeah, now, it does permit us to appoint an alternate and- Yeah, you know, if it happens, so, you know, Mr. Cooks, you want to be the alternate?
I don't even really know what that is, so, no, not right now.
Okay, all right, so let's just say- Okay, all right, so we will, city manager, make a note of that.
We will take care of the paperwork and then we'll follow up and find the original documentation because you left, she left in two thousand sixteen. It's right on it, even if it is, she may have one year at the most left.
Okay, all right, good. All right, last item, see if I can blow through this. Discussion of city's financial relationship with Wells Fargo. I put this on the agenda. I recall back in two thousand eighteen when I first became mayor, we had some discussions about our relationships with Wells Fargo because they were taken to task by the federal banking and the S E C for fraudulent banking practices and loan practices. And the statement by our finance director at that time to change banks was, it's just gonna be too expensive, but no dollars were ever given to us. Okay, silence, no problem. However, in July of this year, Wells Fargo tells its customers it's shuttering all personal lines of credit. I printed this article off of CNBC. Wells Fargo is ending consumer lending, angering its customers. The bank is shutting all existing personal lines of credit. In the coming weeks, it has stopped offering the product. It reviewed its product offerings, decided to discontinue personal portfolio- It reviewed its product offerings, decided to discontinue personal portfolio lines of credit because they're financially unsustainable. And I'm looking at our relationship with Wells Fargo and I say, me personally, enough is enough. So I asked city manager to look into this in terms of what it would cost us to move to another financial institution because I think there is some ethical responsibility on our part as a city in terms of who we deal with. There's plenty of financial institutions available. It may want our business. And it was strictly, should we? Shouldn't we? What are the options? So.
I think that's a deeper conversation. I don't think that's a conversation we talk about in two seconds.
I'll see what she has to say. If we need to move on for, need to do another council session, I'm good with that. Yeah, Doc.
So one question related towards Wells Fargo is that we recently, hadn't been that long ago, but we're recently doing it related to your credit cards and that kind of line, and that was being implemented. So we're, we're in a, are we still in the stage of implementation or?
Yes, we've just about converted over. Right now, we're doing parallel with Chase Payment Tech. So we still have Chase, but we're not using it in almost of our.
My query is to have the city examine whether it's the right or wrong thing to do from a feasibility standpoint. My concern is the ethical standpoint, but what would it cost us to move? And that's what I ask for. Now, if we don't have time to get through that in a minute and a half, we'll table this thing and bring it back at the next city council meeting.
Yeah, because I want, let me just caution us to be very careful as we go through this process. Because regardless if it's Chase, and I'm not speaking of being a former employee as well, I'm speaking of a city council person. Be very careful on what we go out to do when we're talking about any institution. Because institution has to write like we do to move their relationship. And it is very difficult to find sometimes institutions to pick you back up. Chase, we just moved from Chase for a reason as well. And so I would just caution us when you go through this process to not just take those articles. So that's, that's a personal article. That is not a business article. And if you go back to look at the stocks and everything else in this company, I'm sure when you come back to talk to our finance department, I just caution you to be very careful in making those decisions.
So we'll take this up at another city council meeting. We're going to close at six fifty-eight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Duncanville City Council meeting on Tuesday, August seventeenth, 2021, convening city council at seven oh five. For informational purposes, if you're looking at the agenda, we did have an executive session that was programmed to be after our work briefing session. We're going to postpone that until the end of city council. So with that having been called to order, if you would please rise and we have our invocation by Pastor Rocky Vasquez of Calvary Lakeside Baptist Church. Pastor Rocky.
Father Gail, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Lord God, first of all, we give you glory. We give you honor. We give you praise. We thank you for you, for who you are, and for all that you are. God, thank you for the mayor and just pray, Lord God, that you would continue to keep him, sustain him, and use him, Lord, for your glory. Use him for the best of the community. We ask that you continue to bless the council as well. God, let your spirit of wisdom be here. We just pray, Lord God, for unity. We pray, Lord God, that this meeting would reflect you, that it would be in light of what's best for the community. And God, we just pray that you might bless every person here individually as well as collectively. And those that are sitting in, Lord, to be a listening ear. And God will be reminded to give you the glory and to give you the praises. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Vasquez. Please join me in pledges to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. So first thing on agenda for reports is the mayor's report. And I do have a couple of things I would like to cover. The first thing is recognizing a champion of the city. And I would like to do that, recognize Ms. Gail Sliger. Gail, if you come up, please.
I lose my hearing aid when I take my.
I've lost a mirror too.
Same way.
So I lose it. Sometimes I lose a hearing aid when I take my mask off. So I do have my own teeth, though. Come over here, Gail. One of the things that I did on becoming mayor was looking at our model for our city, champions of the city. Or cha, you know, city of champions, I'm sorry. And it goes back to the athletic prowess of our city. And while that is true, and we continue to have fantastic athletic teams, there's more to being a champion of the city in the arts, entertainment, education, business, and media. And what I try to do is look at individuals in our city that are champions of our city in the various aspects of what they do for our city. And I would like to honor Gail Sliger. Champion of the city, for Ms. Sliger's decades of investing into the long-term sustainability of the city, for her unending concern for the well-being of our senior citizens, and her untold behind-the-scenes contributions of time and energy, Ms. Gail Sliger is hereby recognized as a champion of the city. As mayor of the city of Duncanville, I ask the city of Duncanville to join me on congratulating Ms. Sliger on this occasion, August seventeenth, 2021. And Gail, we have a very special medallion for you. And thank you for all that you have done and continue to do. Would you like to say a few words?
You know, the mayor called me and I said, you know, mayor, I'd be happy to do anything that helps our city. There's a little program on TV on HGTV, Laurel, Mississippi. They redo houses. The young lady that hosts that says, you don't have to be an expert. Just get up and do it. So all of us can contribute, whether it's picking up trash, mentoring our young people, being involved, get involved in your city. If there's something you don't like, go fix it. If there's something you like, congratulate those people. That's all I can do.
Thank you, Gail. Congratulations. And per our rules of procedure, we've got three minutes, but I'm going to take a little liberty with the three minutes. So start my timer on the three minutes now. There's. I don't, you never, okay. Alex, are we ready to roll with those slides? Okay, I had an opportunity July thirty-first to be invited to be a speaker for SWAT, Students Willing to Achieve Training. And this is, the CEO is Ms. Brenda Williams, the founder and CEO and headquartered here in Duncanville. And this was at the REC Center. And it was really an honor for me to be asked. And one of the things I'd like to show you, on that far right, there's that gentleman that I'm kneeling next to. And Brenda asked, you know, when she asked me to come speak to these kids in terms of, and she said that we have one gentleman. His aspiration is to be a mayor. I went, what happened to being a fireman and a policeman? And she said, no, he wants to be mayor. So at the graduation, I asked Brenda to tell me which one of the young men it was, and this is he. And he's a great little guy, and it was just an honor for me to be with him. And if you look on that far left, you see him standing in front of me with my hands on his shoulders. He put my hands on his shoulders and would not let them loose. And it was a, it was a really touching moment, but I just wanted to let you all know that we've got some great kids and some great organizations in our city. The next thing is coffee with the mayor. I have another one coming up, May twenty-fifth at the REC, May, August twenty-fifth at the REC Center from eight-thirty to nine-thirty. And that is a hybrid. We're in person and we're Zoom as well. So if you want to spread that around, appreciate it. And the final thing I want to touch on is mask mandate. People may be asking, you're asking, a lot of people have asked, you know, what are we doing as a city? And my discussions in concert with city manager and staff says that if you read Governor Abbott's order, regardless of how you feel about his authority or the county judge's authority or wherever, that reads that any municipality defying that order is subject to a lawsuit. And so what we have decided is that we will not issue a mask mandate, but we strongly encourage and recommend the use of masks in city buildings. So whatever else is happening on the political front, we're not engaged in that. Whatever the independent school districts do, we're not engaged in that. That is how we as a city are working with the mask mandate. So thank you for your understanding and concern with that. So that concludes my mayor's report. Moving on to city council members' reports, Mr. Cooks.
Yes, good evening to all and to our Duncanville residents. I have a couple of things. One, I meet, connect, and learn. This month, on the twenty-eighth, my guest will be trustee Cliff Boyd, who will talk about student scholarship and Dallas College. So if you're available to hear that on Zoom, please join us. It is out there where you have the Zoom connection where you can join in and talk to trustee Cliff Boyd about Dallas College and scholarships for our students. Secondly, on this coming Saturday, I noted I'd mentioned that we had school supply giveaways. So on this Saturday at the Pelican House, we will be giving over about fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars of supplies to the school district for students to use as the high school or as the school district see necessary. So if you have an opportunity, please stop by Ben Franklin or any other of the businesses to drop off any supplies that you have. And then last but not least, our champion, which is Ms. Ariel Atkins, a U.S. Olympian. She, as you know, the basketball team did win. She's not back in town, but I hope when she's back in town that we'll get to recognize her of being our Olympian star at Duncanville. And she represented us really well on national TV because she really talked about her roots being here in Duncanville. So we need to do the same when she return home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Mr. McBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick note, Arnold DeWeard was a District Five city council person. He served in the Navy and he recently passed. He was a dedicated citizen to this community. So just want to put that out. And his service is going to be Thursday at the DFW National Cemetery. However, they're limiting to ten because of what's going on. So wanted to do that. And also I wanted to congratulate Ms. Sliger again for her award. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBurnett. Seeing no other slides? Thank you. I will move on to city manager's report.
Mayor and council, to start with, I want to just make an announcement first and then give you just a little update. The Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting movies in the park on Saturday, September fourth, at seven thirty PM with the showing of Marvel's Spider-Man Homecoming at Armstrong Park Amphitheater. It's a free event to attend and food vendors will be available on site. Come out and enjoy the beautiful evening in Armstrong Park with your family and friends. The next part of my report is just an update for council. Many have asked questions about workflow and citizens wonder about when you send information into council. We've provided you on your desk a flow chart of what happens when information comes into staff. And it basically takes you through how it's sent in and how we process it through our assistant city manager. But what we've also included in here is just to give you a little bit of an expectation. We will have more time to talk through this, but I wanted to provide this to council in advance to get your feedback. And then we can do at a work session more discussion on the turnaround in service delivery for this information. You'll also start to receive, as you receive now, updates on requests in my weekly report. But we'll also start to provide you just a summary of where we are at each council meeting, independent of that, so that you will have that information to know where we are on issues. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, city manager. Item number two, we do not have any proclamations or presentations tonight. Moving on to item number three, citizens input. Pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero zero seven of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from delivering any issues not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations as permitted by law. And we do have in the city of Duncanville a two-minute limitation. Now, we, tonight, I need to modify in terms of what's going to be happening. I do have some citizen comments that are general in nature, but I also have some citizen comments that are specific in nature to something that was discussed in our briefing session. So what I'm going to do is read those citizen comments that are more general in nature. And I have a good number of citizen comments pertaining to the agenda item, agenda item. Five C, agenda item five C. And so what I'm going to do then is we, when we come to agenda item five C, I'm going to read those citizen comments. Then we will go to individuals present who wish to speak for the pros and cons of item five C in a public hearing. And because we're in hybrid mode, we have Zoom going on. Those individuals who are logged on on Zoom who wish to speak are then going to be given some time to speak as well. Now, I will talk about the time limits on the public hearing when we get there because it's another subject. So reading the citizen comments that I have. The first one is from Heloise Ford in Greenbrier Estates, no specific address. "I've lived in the Greenbrier Estates since 2011, and I've noticed in the last month or so how it is deteriorating. Tall weeds, trash, and grass along the sidewalks and the medians, especially on Daniel Dale. Overgrown vegetation from the backyards of homes that is almost down to the sidewalks. It is such an eyesore. I don't know why we even have code enforcement when they do not enforce these issues. Would appreciate your assistance in addressing these issues. When you travel to Cedar Hill and DeSoto, you do not see tall weeds, grass, and overgrown vegetation." Thank you. Heloise Ford. The next one is from a Mr. James Hunter. This is quite lengthy, and as reading it, I will probably exceed the two minutes, but I'm going to invoke privilege, I guess, to read the full comment that the individual has provided to me. "Please include my expressions in the upcoming council meeting referring to Republic. I have contacted council member District Four, Mark Cooks, David Dunn, and LaShawn Devon, expressing my unhappiness with the lack of service with Republic. They continue to not give us the service we require in our neighborhoods, also at the church where I worship. We can understand an occasional error, but to be consistent in erring is ridiculous. I have documentation of my complaints along with several of my neighbors that witnessed the same. I believe they confide in me because I was a city employee. Now retired, they believe I am aware of how things are supposed to operate. They feel the need to tell me about the lack of service from Republic. I then pass it on, I pass it to the needed department in their behalf because most are more elderly than myself. I sense the obligation to fulfill their request and that our neighborhood will be well-kept, beautiful place to be." Parenes, item number one, "We see a concern that when we call and complain about service, we told to call Republic. Really? Do you expect them to police themselves, keeping complaints against themselves? Oh, sure, they are very apologetic each time you call, only for the results to remain." Parenes, "One of the ways the ball is dropped." Close parenes, open parenes, "Yet we continue to pay them for this service." Close, parenes. Telling us we can't bring any other company into the city to collect our trash. Maybe this is one of the problems. No competition. They don't have a reason to do better. We just pay them as if everything's okay, no accountability. Item two. When we call, we get contradicting information. Each person, parenes, city slash Republic, telling us something different. Outcome problem not solved. We put forth every effort to follow stated guidelines to have no positive outcomes. Parenes, unless we make a phone call to Ms. Vaughn. Close, parenes. I'm beginning to feel guilty calling her as if I'm a constant complainer. For many years up to now, we've been taking our own trash, so we'll not be there on Sundays when we have service. What a disservice to us. Parenes, taxation without representation. Close, parenes. Item three. Now each time we place the trash at two-one-two-six South Main. Parenes, church building. Close, parenes. We have to call into the city. Parenes, Ms. Vaughn. Close, parenes. Office to get the trash picked up each time. I must say, I know she is doing her part along with Mr. Dunn. All this to say, it's not correcting this issue. When we call, they send someone out to take care of the issue for that day. Item four. While talking to Republic, they say we have an issue whether you. Parenes, W H C O C. Close, parenes, are a commercial customer or residential. We are considered commercial because of our establishment, but we are residential when it comes to Republic and the trash pickup, and that we are not on the route sheet. Now where? Now, I'm sorry, we're now where would I get this nonsense if not told? Bottom line, still the same headaches. We have been working on this since March twenty-twenty-one. Item five. I heard that the contract has been extended without research to find out how fair the community, how fair with the community. Stated no knowledge of complaints. How would you hear them? Process of accountability for this company needs to be revamped, reconsidered. In respect to your meeting and time factor, I will cease this letter. Please note that there are many unhappy citizens in Duncanville with this company, which we have no idea your outlook with them. It's obvious okay considering the decisions you've made extend their contract with the city, demanding no other companies of this type can enter Duncanville. Very unhappy citizens with Republic. I have documents of issues we have sent to support our claim. Respectfully yours, members of our dear city. Mr. Hunter has also submitted a letter. Dear City of Duncanville, we are writing this complaint regarding Republic as mentioned in previous conversation with city employees. We have and have had issues with this company from a business and residential perspective. Several times when putting out our trash and brush, Republic has not picked up the items. We have followed your instructions. When we call them and city, all we get is directions on how to address our concerns to no avail. That does not correct the issues. We take our trash and debris to the city of Dallas, dump, and pay from a business focus. We make several calls from a residential focus only to be lied to because they don't pick the items up when they say. We will not allow items to sit in front of our building until they decide to pick them up. Republic apologetic with reverse the same next pickup times. Reasonable time, as they state over the phone, only appeasement. They request account information that we don't have. Our account is with the city. For the city to tell us we must use, cannot use anyone else as an insult. Where in America can you allow a company to monopolize a business? That is not the American way. Yet our tax dollars pay for this service. I will also be forwarding this to our city council person as well as the city manager. Very unhappy. Here for over thirty-plus years and considering moving, understanding what more why Duncanville struggles as a city. Many people unhappy and businesses are leaving this city. Look at the parenes, next door app. Close, parenes. I've been informed you can't do that. It's available, not for your reactions, but you can at least see how people feel. Really don't like using the word feel because I've learned for the most parts. Many don't care about others' feel. Feelings are said to be unreliable. Here are the facts. James Hunter, Whispering Hills Church of Christ, Duncanville, Texas, seven-five-one-three-seven, two-one-two-six South Main Street, Duncanville, Texas, seven-five-one-three-seven. Next item from Nick Corchesny. I hope I've got that correct. Regarding higher property taxes, there is no good reason for higher property taxes unless there can be an opportunity for exemption or a way to minimize the cost of living Duncanville. To continue raising to the minimum amount just before the threshold of a community vote seems quite unethical. Find a better way to get more tax dollars in like new slash better businesses rather than taxing the hell out of your citizens. I love this city and think it's got a ton of potential, but the weight of the city continues to place on us as citizens makes me seriously consider moving to a city that will work to make my living area better. I see my altar dollars as an investment. I expect a return on that investment, and Duncanville isn't giving any real R.O.I. If I saw Duncanville using my tax dollars to make itself better, I'd be okay with higher taxes, but you haven't shown you can slash will be wise with our money. Until that changes, I will oppose higher taxes or move. Open, parenes, as will most people. Close, parenes. Thank you, Nick Corchesny. This, uh, next item is from Mary Ann Taylor, nine-three-five Nature Drive. Attached, please find my comment regarding the item on tonight's agenda. I have a conflict and I'm not planning to read it myself, but understand that this submission can be read and entered into the record. To the Duncanville City Council, one word, colon, ammonia. It works fairly well, probably ninety percent of the time, to keep scavenging animals out of my trash. I'm on my third bottle this year. That pungent, sharp odor stings their eyes and nose in the same way as it does mine. Effective but painful. When I opposed the rolling trash carts currently under discussion for Duncanville, it was because of ammonia. What I have works, I reasoned. That thinking was flawed. Not everyone else makes this choice, and that one-point-two-mill between our trash and our wildlife is pretty thin. In addition, the bags now seem an eyesore even without being shredded. Duncanville deserves better optics. Not for the blue tubs we already use. I have no solutions for the recycled bins. Paper blows out even if anchored well. Our current containers are small, so we must either overflow them or use boxes or paper bags for the excess. Your decision to switch to covered large containers would seem obvious. A number of arguments can be made against the trash carts, however, and I will address these. Aren't they hard to move? Subpoint. An option with wheels is best. Any small additional charge, parenes, if necessary, close, parenes, would be well worth it. Bullet, those who are older or move, or movement impaired can request special assistance. Bags are an equal challenge. In reality, though, people find ways to drag or wheel trash to the curbs. The bags tear easily if dragged, or so I've learned the hard way. Item, once a week isn't enough trash removal. Bullet, the carts hold multiple bags of trash, and the heavy lid prevents the odor and pests whether the carts are stored inside the garage or outside the house. Bullet, this is eventually a win for homeowners, half the work, all the removal. Item, won't the carts result in a higher bill? Bullet, the black bags aren't free, remember, and they are not required for carts because inside bags go directly into the carts. No more double bagging. Bullet, crews work nonstop picking up litter. They could concentrate on litter in more difficult areas because carts will free up some of their time. Bullet, convenience and uniformity are worth whatever extra charge there will be. Item, people won't roll the carts back to their homes. Bullet, our son in the Air Force has lived in six houses in the last eight years. All the cities, as well as the base housing, use carts for both trash and recycling. In every city, between four states, the results were the same. People brought their carts back and with, back within the day. Again, convenience may play a role, but a large green container is certainly visible and impossible to miss. I assume there would be city-imposed rules for non-compliance. Bullet, consider the tremendous problems when streets do for bag pickup or miss for whatever reason, even without carts. Block after block has trash bags lying on or near sidewalks for one to three extra days. Bullet, trash left after our non-ammonia using friends and neighbors remains sometime, remains sometimes out for days, attracting all manner of vermin and insects. Item, I believe the carts will bring Duncanville into the prevailing times, improve the look of the city, and provide an easier way to deal with our garbage pickup. I urge you to approve this change. Mary Ann Taylor, nine-three-five Nature Drive. Last com, citizen comment from Patricia Ebert, one-one-five South Greenstone Lane, Duncanville, seven-five-one-one-six. City Secretary Downs, please have the mayor or his designate read my public comments. Neighborhood Services is the new name for code enforcement. Neighborhood Services is now a separate department with its own budget. Assistant City Manager Robert Brown says code will do better after a city councilman said he had heard horror stories about code. August sixth, my tire went flat as I was driving up my driveway. Surprised by how quickly my all-state roadside assistance guy arrived, he said he lived in Duncanville and was a Reed and Duncanville High School grad. Then he told me his code stories. Although a strange, total stranger to me, I knew he was telling the truth. Code was harassing and selective. He was working on a code violation while a smashed-up, um, quotes, smashed-up vehicle, end quotes, was in plain sight, a few houses down, with no action being taken. When I first heard code stories in two thousand and eleven, I thought people were exaggerating. But the stories all had one theme, harassing and selective. Fast forward to August sixth, twenty-twenty-one, same old, same old. I agree with the city manager. Neighborhood Services will present regularly. Open, parenes. I recommend a monthly quantitative report. Close, parenes, to the city council. I support enforcing established code ordinances. We can all help make our city better by reporting code violations. But we who live here deserve to be treated respectfully, fairly, and impartially. Lastly, our citizens on patrol, parenes, cops, still authorized to report, but not serve code violations. Patricia Ebert, one-one-five South Greenstone Lane. That concludes, uh, citizen comments, uh, aside from Item Five C. I, we do have present with us individuals from, uh, Republic. And if they wish, uh, I can allow them some, a couple of minutes to respond to those items that were, uh, directly on Republic. Please state your, your name for us and your present position with Republic.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. I'm Joanna Fritz. I'm the manager of municipal sales for Republic Services. I am the liaison between Republic Services and the city. Um, that is my job. I took down, um, uh, the address, the twenty-one-twenty-six South Main. That was a church, I believe, that had an issue. And then, uh, the Whispering Hills Church of Christ, I believe, was the other one that was mentioned. Um, I will be looking into these accounts tomorrow, uh, to see what is going on, if there's anything, uh, amiss there. And we will give them a call and find out what exactly is going on and see that we get that corrected as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. City Secretary, do please, oh, no. I'm reading and I'm saying one thing in my brain. City Secretary, please read the consent item.
Item four A, consider the minutes for the April twenty-ninth Town Hall meeting, May fourth, twenty-twenty-one, city council regular meeting, and then May twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, city council special meeting. Four B, consider a resolution rejecting all bids received for IFB-two-one-dash-zero-zero-three renovations and expansion services for the property located at three-hundred-and-thirty Shady Trail Drive, Duncanville, Texas, seven-five-one-three-seven Municipal Service Center, providing for appropriate notice and providing for authorization to rebid. Four C, consider a resolution designating the additional structural repairs to the north and south ground storage tanks at Daniel Dale Pump Station as emergency repairs, authorizing an increase of up to one-hundred-thousand dollars to Professional Engineering Services Agreement Number one-eight-dash-one-one-two, authorizing an increase of up to one-million dollars to IFB-two-one-dash-zero-zero-one-zero, authorizing an increase of up to fifty-thousand dollars to Professional Engineering Services Agreement Number two-one-dash-zero-three-two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the associated charge, change orders, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. McNabb has made a motion to approve. Second, please. Second from Mr. Harvey. This is council, please vote. Thank you. Consent item agenda has been approved unanimously. Moving on to item number five, items for individual consideration. Item five A, conduct a public hearing. Parenes, twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one. Close, parenes, for consideration and action regarding a city-initiated request to rezone the following properties from local office slash retail district, quote, L O R, close quotes, to S F dash seven, single-family residential district. One, Pelts Block A, Lot Six A. Parenes, twelve-eleven Highland Drive. Two, Pelts Block A, Lot Five A. Parenes, twelve-fifteen Highland Drive. Three, Pelts Block A, Lot Four A. Parenes, twelve-nineteen Highland Drive. Four, Pelts slash Colonnade slash Slayback Rep. Block A, Lot Three A. Parenes, twelve-twenty-seven Highland Drive. Five, Pelts slash Colonnade slash Slayback Rep. Block A, Lot One A. Parenes, twelve-thirty-one Highland Drive. Close, parenes. Six, Daniel Dale Acres Block A. P T Trail Two. Parenes, twelve-thirty-five Highland Drive. Seven, Daniel Dale Acres Block A. P T Trail Two. Parenes, one-two-seven Jewel Lane. Close, parenes. Eight, Daniel Dale Acres Abstract one-two-nine-nine. Open, parenes, one-two-six Jewel Lane. Close, parenes. Nine, Daniel Dale Acres Block B, Lot Two. Open, parenes, thirteen-oh-three Highland Drive. Close, parenes. Ten, Daniel Dale Acres Block B, Lot Three. Open, parenes, thirteen-eleven Highland Drive. Close, parenes. Eleven, Daniel Dale Acres Block B, Lot Four. Open, parenes, thirteen-fifteen Highland Drive. Close, parenes. Twelve, Daniel Dale Acres Block B, Lot Five. Open, parenes, thirteen-twenty-three Highland Drive. Close, parenes. Thirteen, Daniel Dale Acres Block B, Lot Six. Open, parenes, thirteen-thirty-one Highland Drive. Close, parenes. Fourteen, Daniel Dale Acres Block B, Lot Seven. Open, parenes, one-two-five Little Street. That concludes reading the item. Turning it over to Mr. Sky Tibode. Mr. Tibode.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, first, let's take a look at the aerial of the property. Uh, this is bound by, generally by Azalea, Main Street, Little Street, and Highland Drive. Uh, this being, the subject property being located on the western side of Highland Drive. Uh, you can see it's surrounded by, uh, existing residential uses to the east, uh, across Highland Drive, to the north, uh, as you approach Azalea Lane. Uh, commercial uses along Main Street, uh, west of the property. As you move south on Main Street, uh, more residential uses. And here's an image of the current zoning of the property. You can see it's currently zoned, local office retail to the west. It's surrounded by more local office retail zoning. To the east, across Highland Drive is Single Family Seven. And to the south, southwest, you can see a little pocket. That's a planned development for, uh, a multi-family, uh, development, um, called Austin Stone. Uh, so that is a planned development currently in existence. Uh, and to the north, as you approach Azalea, is more Single Family Seven zoning. Again, this is a city-initiated request, and this derives from joint meetings back from October, uh, specifically the October nineteenth, uh, joint meeting between city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. This was one of three areas that was discussed if the city wanted to, uh, move forward with rezoning. Uh, one was at the southeast corner of Duncanville Road and I twenty. Uh, that was, uh, discussed to be, uh, to keep, actually. It's, it's downtown zoning. Uh, there was another one associated with Highland, or I'm sorry, with Merrill Drive, uh, to expand the downtown district. We anticipate bringing that before you around October, uh, for consideration and action. And then this one, um, that was basically, uh, going from, um, local office retail to Single Family Seven. The discussion back in October really had to do with, uh, with Highland Drive, kind of the nature and the environment that exists right now. Uh, if you drive down Highland Drive, A, it was discussed by, uh, Freezer Nichols, the consultant at the time, uh, that it was inaccessible from a commercial standpoint. You have to access Highland Drive from, basically from Little or Azalea, which are really, um, your, your more, uh, residential thoroughfares. Uh, and then also it speaks to the comp plan. So if you look at the future land use map, uh, in the comprehensive plan, you'll see that low-density residential is, uh, what's designated for the subject property. And again, with comprehensive plan, the subject property is designated as low-density residential, which is envisioned as representing single-family detached neighborhoods with living units for a range of incomes and needs. Low-density areas are generally, or they generally range between three to five units per acre. And the request is compatible with the comprehensive plan, which was also discussed back in October. Staff sent out eighty-eight notices to the public and as- Staff sent out 88 notices to the public, and as of today, no responses have been received for or against the item. And at the July 26th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval by a vote of, vote of five to zero, uh, in favor of the request. Staff is happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Tibido. At this time, uh, the process that we, that we have is we open it up to the, to the public hearing. Once the public hearings are closed, then Mr. Tibido will respond to any questions or inquiries from council. So at this time, uh, to explain how it works, is I offer, uh, 10 minutes to individuals who wish to speak in favor of, and then 10 minutes who wish to speak opposed to. But that's 10 minutes in the aggregate. Each individual does not receive 10 minutes to speak. So as I open each session, for those in favor, there's a time of 10 minutes that begins at that point. Now here again, because we are hybrid, uh, I will call forward first those individuals that are in person who wish to speak for or against an item. And then, uh, our IT folks and Kristen are monitoring our, uh, virtual meeting. If anyone wishes to speak, then those individuals will be called upon. But it will still be, uh, prescribed in the 10-minute timeframe. Hope that's clear to everyone. So I'm going to open, uh, the public hearing for those individuals in favor. And the timestamp on opening this portion of the public hearing is 7:45. So any individual present who wishes to speak in favor of this, of this item, please come forward. Seeing no persons present wishing to come forward, are there any individuals on our virtual meeting that wish to speak?
No, sir.
Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to close, um, I'm sorry, no. We'll move on to the, those in opposition. So I'm opening up, yeah, I need, help me out here, Kristen. Don't need to, I don't need a motion to close the positive. I've gotten myself all confused.
You can, uh...
I'm gonna open, I'm gonna open this, I'm gonna open 10 minutes for those in opposition, then we'll close the public hearing, both in favor and opposition, take the motion. Okay. Okay. So, don't look at the clock, Gordon. Okay. So opening the, uh, the portion of the, the hearing for those in opposition to the item. Any present, please come forward. Did I say in opposition?
Yes, you did.
Okay. So it is opposition. Okay. Seeing no individuals coming forward in opposition to the item, are there individuals in our virtual meeting that wish to speak on, to oppose the item?
We do, sir. We have one in IT. If you can turn on Kadim Collins's microphone. And Mr. Collins, can you please state your name and address for the record, and you can speak?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, Kadim Collins. I'm at 211 Martin Luther Circle. Um, and I, you know, I'm, I'm virtual, so I guess it's kinda hard for me. Um, but I'm not necessarily against it, right? I guess I had a couple of questions for Mr., um, uh, city, city planner. Um, the, the questions I had were really around the survey. So I've been in the city for about eight months, um, and I didn't get the survey. And I'd love to sort of, you know, provide input. Um, I guess the question really circles around, um, how long were the surveys sort of sent out in, in a sense of response time? So was it sent out and folks were supposed to send it back in a week? How much time did folks get to sort of respond to the survey? Um, and then the second question, really just sort of general purpose, right? So we're rezoning the, the plot. Any intentions of, of what we're planning to do with it? Or is it just really sort of rezoning effort right now in preliminary stages? Or any idea where, what it's gonna be used for, you know, ultimately?
Sure, I'll respond to the, the first question, so...
Well, we, we have a little bit of a procedural issue. Those are questions that were asked. There wasn't a statement for or against. So what we need to do is take this individual's questions. I, I need to close this portion of the hearing, and then you can, you can respond to those questions. Okay?
Sure.
It, it's a matter of technicality in terms of how the question, you know, it operates. So, sir, we, we, hey, we have your questions, and when the close of the hearing, those will be answered by Mr. Tibido.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, that closes the, the portion of the hearing in opposition. I'm gonna open the portion of the hearing in favor. Are individuals present in favor of this item?
Mayor, we, we've done that, so I, I wanna make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Harvey, I mean, uh, Mr. Contra, Contreras? Has seconded. Counsel, please vote on closing the hearing. Thank you. Hearing is closed at 7:49. Okay, now, Mr. Tibido, would, now, I didn't, was it, was it Hollis? Was it his name? Collins, Mr. Collins. Mr. Tibido, would you please respond to Mr., Mr. Collins's questions?
Yes, Mr. Collins. So, uh, the image I have up is actually showing the 200-foot buffer surrounding the property in which staff put out, um, property owner notices in written form. So we send out a description of what's being done, uh, along with the map of the subject property, and also a returnable survey that talks about the dates, um, of which the, the public hearing will be held, and gives them an option to check off in favor, opposition, and then a reason why. So we send this out, the state mandates that we send this out 10 days prior to the public hearing. Staff actually goes a little bit beyond that. We send it roughly 14 to 16 days. We try to get everything out, uh, that would be three Fridays before the actual public hearing, so we send it out a little bit before that. Um, and again, the, uh, the letters explain exactly what to do. Uh, in, included in the packet is the list of the property owners that were noticed. So perhaps the gentleman was just outside this buffer. Um, that's all I can really think about.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, there's a second part.
Okay, okay. All right, just, we'll enter, yes.
Mayor, before we go there, I think one of the questions they asked about, and I would, would you go ahead and share that these are turning into what, from what?
That's right.
I think that was really more of his question as well.
That's right, yes. Apologies, that was the first part. So the second part of the question, uh, was in regard, you know, what is entailed with the zoning. Uh, Mr. Collins, this was actually a city-initiated request. It really, it's not associated with any development that's coming in. It's really to conform to the area as it exists and has, as the city envisions it. Uh, that matches the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, if you look at the shape in the future land use plan map, uh, it mirrors the, I guess, the hatched area of the subject property. You'll see a bright yellow there, and that calls for low-density residential, uh, which, if, uh, rezoned, if this was approved, would actually conform to the comprehensive plan. But as far as any, uh, vision, any development coming with, uh, there is nothing at this time.
So it essentially creates a neighborhood?
Yes, yeah, it matches what's existing there, basically.
Right, it matches what we have. It, 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 it bounds the neighborhood and makes it more comprehensible.
That's exactly right.
Okay, uh, opening up, uh, any questions or comments, Mr. Tibido from council? Uh, Mr. Contreras?
When a, uh, potential developer comes along to fill these lots, do they have to go to P and Z to propose their project for approval?
Um, if somebody were to swallow up all these lots that we're talking about and then propose to redevelop?
Or any single lot? I mean, I, I imagine it's gonna be done piecemeal.
Sure, i- if there's a vacant lot, let's pull up the aerial and see what we do have. It looks like there might be a few parcels, we'll know. I don't believe there's any vacant parcels per se, but say, say something where, to propose to be redeveloped.
Good.
Okay. So, somebody wants to redevelop one of these homes, so long as they're conforming to the single, if this was approved to go to single-family seven, so long as they conform to the area, yard bulk standards, setbacks, height requirements, uh, block coverages, things like that, uh, no, they could just develop as a residential property just like anybody else, you know, uh, submit a residential building permit and go through that process.
Okay, so you'll, you'll, but you'll be in the approval process to make sure it conforms to all those requirements?
Actually, not necessarily. Our, our Angelica and our other reviewers within the building, uh, department, um, they're trained to look at the, the zoning and make sure they don't encroach anything. If there's any gray areas, anything that might, uh, be of question, I'll be involved in that process. They do a good job involving me in those cases.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Cooks?
Mr. Tibido, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I wanna make sure we're on track. When we started this, it, it is zoned for office and retail.
It's zoned local office retail currently, yes, sir.
Now, we're simply requesting, based upon the, what the area looks like right now, that you're just changing it to what it should be, which is single-family home seven.
That's right. And that was determined, uh, on October 19th of 2020, yes, sir.
So we're not, so this is not about trying to bring retail to it. It's just really looking, taking those homes, those 14 homes, and identifying it as single-family homes and not retail space.
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. This is, this is creating the neighborhood, so it remains as a neighborhood. Yeah. Mr. Contreras, is your light on? Did you need to come back?
Well, I, I will say, uh, I appreciate that, uh, correction. I wasn't here when all this first came up, and I read this a few times, and I, I, I didn't get it until now, so thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comments, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. There's a second, please. We have a second by Mr. Harvey. Counsel, please vote. Thank you. Uh, item is unanimously approved by council. Moving on to item 5B. Consider and take action on the request of Julius Okonola, representing the Redeemer's Christian Church of God Victory House, owner and applicant for a planned development, quote, PD, to allow for an event center with modified standards on Chicana Glory Edition, Block A, Lot 1, approximately 3.910 acres, more commonly known as 515 Center Street, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Public hearing, open perens 2021-10. Closed perens was held August 3rd, 2021. Uh, Mr. Tibido.
Thank you, sir. This item was, uh, tabled at the August 3rd, 2021 city council meeting. Uh, and sorry, it's more of a question for me. Do we go through a process to vote to remove from the table to continue the item? Okay. That was a city thing from an old city of mine, then. All right, again, this is a planned development to allow for an event center with modified standards. Here's an aerial of the property, uh, shown last time. You can see the City of Duncanville's park to the north generally, and then following to the east of the property. As you approach Center Street, there is an existing residential home. Uh, to the south across Center Street are existing residential homes and Hastings Elementary. Uh, immediately to the west of the property are, are single-family seven zone, uh, I'm sorry, single-family ten zone residential structures. And here's the zoning map, uh, that explains the zoning surrounding there. Basically, it's surrounded by a single-family ten zoning. Uh, there is an SUP as you work westward, uh, across Park Lane. That SUP is associated with the townhome development currently in existence. To go over the scope of this project, so this is to allow the use of event center with modified standards. Uh, the subject property is composed of an existing place of worship and parking area in front along Center Street. And the event center development and associated site improvements are proposed to be oriented to the rear portion of the subject property. Uh, aside from the additional use, the only performance standard at this time needing variance approval is regarding landscape buffers and associated vegetative screening. So staff put a, an attachment, attachment number eight with this item, and so we wanted to utilize our, our slides to basically go through, uh, what was discussed generally in, in that attachment, um, so you can get an idea of the mechanism that, that staff needs to use in order to create a conforming, uh, zoning district. And then as well as the thought processes, as far as how do we get to a use that is deemed appropriate for, for the proposed project in any situation? So first, uh, we wanna talk about what a planned development is, so I, I'll read this verbatim. A planned development or PD district is a type of zoning used to permit new or innovative concepts in land use not permitted by other zoning districts in these regulations, or to permit, uh, development projects that exist, that existing districts cannot easily accommodate. The purpose of the PD is to provide land for uses and developments that promote development that is more sensitive to the natural environment, create a significantly enhanced natural setting or sense of place, or otherwise enhance the standard pattern of development in the city. So how would you go, how do we go about determining use? And then what does, uh, planning staff have as far as our tools in, in making that determination? So what I look at is section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance. Here's a snapshot of that page. And so item A under section 3.02 talks about city planner classification as a similar use. So I'll just read this as well. The newer unlisted use will be referred to, um, the city planner to determine whether the new or unlisted use should be classified as a similar existing use. So this is telling me to go through the use chart, section 3.03, the permitted, um, use chart, and look for a similar use. There might be, you know, a multitude of uses that might be considered similar, so therefore I'm looking for the most similar use by definition. Uh, you could see item number B here, zoning text amendment for new or enlisted uses. What this section is talking about, if A cannot be determined to be the proper method, then I go to B. And what that means is you open up the zoning ordinance, introduce the use, and so it's a text amendment. So basically, I would be in front of you with the zoning ordinance, talking about, uh, in this case, a retreat center if we were gonna come up with another use, and would that be appropriate in a single-family district? And we would go down that conversation. Would that be opening up the entire zoning ordinance? In this case, we utilize the mechanism, the zoning mechanism of a planned development and language in item number A, uh, classifying the proposed project with a similar use. So this is actually, uh, what, uh, what I went down is as far as my research in regard to uses that might be considered that might be similar to this project. So first, staff analyzed the following uses, community center, public, and place of worship. Uh, these uses are contained within the educational, institutional, public, and special uses category of the permitted use chart. Uh, the place of worship is actually the use associated with the church itself in existence. And, cause we wanted to see if it could just be seen as an extension of the church, and therefore avoiding, uh, potentially having to rezone. So when we analyzed the associated definitions contained in section, uh, 7.02, the definition section of the zoning ordinance, it was determined that uses would not be suitable, uh, that were mentioned in the slide above, to the intended activities and clientele as described by the applicant. Community center, public, when we read a building dedicated to social or recreational activities, serving the city neighborhood and owned and operated by the city, or by a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, it was determined that really was an appropriate use for this project. We looked at place of worship, again, an extension of the existing church, a building for regular assembly for, uh, religious public worship that is used primarily for and designed for such purpose, such as a church, synagogue, mosque, or similar, along, uh, with accessory activities that are customarily associated, uh, therewith, such as a place of residence for ministers, priests, nuns, rabbis on the premises, and that is tax exempt as defined by the state law. So after those were determined not to be the most similar, most appropriate, uh, staff went on to analyze the more commercially categorized, uh, uses. And the two that stuck out were commercial general and banquet or banquet or event center, event center in this case. So we first looked at the definition for commercial general, uh, which reads, "Commercial establishments that are engaged in commercial activity not elsewhere classified." It's a vague catch-all type definition. It can be used and could be considered in this case. But when we looked at the definition associated with banquet or event center, a building, facility, room, or portion thereof that is rented, leased, or otherwise made available to any person or group for a private event function that is not open to the general public regardless of whether a fee is charged or not, including reception, uh, facilities for wedding venues is also included in that definition. So staff determined this is the most similar use as it exists in the permitted use chart of the zoning ordinance, and therefore, that's where we came up with the determination to associate this project with event center, and then modify it and customize it with the PD mechanism. So revisiting the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan designates the subject property as public semi-public ISD. Uh, uses are envisioned as public surfing in, in the, uh, in the public semi-public ISD district or designated areas. Uh, development standards like retail and office uses while being convenient and accessible to all residents. And the proposed event center uses are generally in, uh, commercial in nature. However, this proposed, this proposal intended by the applicant is to be more in line with the activities associated with retreat centers. Uh, to review what we talked about last time in regard to site performance, 25 parking spaces are required, uh, with additions, 39 spaces are being, um, provided in this case. Uh, the proposed modifications in regard to landscaping and screening have to do with the landscape buffer. That's the 15-foot landscape buffer requirement adjacent when a non-residential, uh, use is adjacent to residential uses, uh, along with a, with a vegetative screening, uh, to be placed, uh, planted within the 15-foot buffer as well. And then signage, we just put this in here, must comply with chapter 16A of the Code of Ordinances. And then revisiting last time, this has not changed from the applicant. Uh, this is the site plan that was proposed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, you can see the substandard link... lan- landscape buffer areas along the proposed addition associated with the event retreat center, and then the existing area with the existing parking lot, both on the east and west side. This was in reaction to Planning and Zoning's recommendation, which was to provide a full fifteen-foot buffer with vegetative screen along the western property boundary, showing conformance with the fifteen-foot landscape buffer requirement along the proposed parking area with the retreat slash event center, and then while remaining the, the substandard landscape buffer scenario in the existing parking areas. And again, shown in, with the landscaping plans as well, this one showing non-conformance associated with the, with the proposed retreat slash event center, and this one showing conformance with the proposed retreat slash event center while maintaining existing conditions in the existing area. Here is the elevation exhibit that we saw last time. And staff sent out twenty-seven notices to the public, as of today, six responses have been received in opposition, I would like to thank the attorney for noting and making sure we checked that a, a majority vote of three-quarters would not be required tonight, and what that means is opposition receive that equals a total of twenty percent of the land area within the two hundred-foot buffer, when you add up the, the responses against, it's more in the neighborhood of about eleven to twelve percent of the total area, so the three-fourths vote is not required in this case. And then at the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Special Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval subject to the following, a full fifteen-foot landscape buffer with vegetative screen to be provided along the full width of the western property boundary, making overnight lodging permitted for retreat and event center guests, the site plan and landscape plan exhibits be adopted as part of the PD ordinance, should we go with the modified or the initially proposed site plan and landscape plan, and any additional or potential future changes to the adopted plans be reconsidered and approved by P and Z and council, basically going through the PD process once again. And in covering the items that were discussed at the August third, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting, so we did discuss alcohol sales and consumption, not to go too far into this at this time, but there, there are state requirements that, that handle this, again, talking to the, to Pastor Julius and, and the property owner, there's no intended sales of alcohol for the property, any consumption would be brought in, you know, associated with any church service that, you know, would normally take place, or maybe with retreat center guests if this were to be proposed or approved and, and constructed, again, no alcohol sales are being proposed with this, with this development. Occupancy related to the prayer chalet, so this is something, Councilman Contreras, we, we talked about with the building official, the plans examiner, and also fire, so there's multiple ways that we look at this internally, fire kind of sees occupancy one way with the building type, as you know, and then the building official, once they get those building plans in, they'll determine occupancy another way with the, the living quarters on the second floor, the prayer chalet versus what's going on on the first floor, so they'll determine those occupancy rates or occupancy requirements at the time those building plans are submitted, of course, they will follow all pertinent codes and make sure it's a safe, safely-built structure. We talked about hours of operation and intended users, there's definitely opportunity to write additional stipulations should council decide that's appropriate, something capping maybe the retreat center hours to a certain time, you know, the activity associated with the, with the retreat center, but then allowing living quarters to happen overnight, that might be one option. Language for noise abatement, we do have general language there, and it is pretty general, you know, it talks about more common sense type, type measurements, you know, I'm used to more of a, a formal, you know, you're actually measuring decimal levels at a, at a property boundary, but this is more common sense, where if it just gets too loud, it talks about ten PM being kind of the cutoff time to not be more loud than what's, you know, socially acceptable essentially, and then in that case, it becomes a potential police matter. And then property taxation, that was a difficult one, so in my research, it kind of depends on what county that you're, that you're talking about, so, you know, does a county assess commercial-type taxes to a, to a religious facility property if, if they see activities are being done there? That's a county-by-county type decision, actually. What does Dallas County do, I'm not sure, tried to put in a call to the tax assessor's office, but didn't get much of response, unfortunately, but again, in my research, there's kind of two mechanisms that are working at once in this case, so I don't know if you've ever heard of UBIT, but the IRS has a, a process, but this is more of an income tax type situation, not property tax, where income taxes are, are assessed if, by the IRS, if there are additional type revenues being generated that are outside the normal religious place of worship activity, so the IRS has a mechanism for that, again, but that's not property tax type, type information, there are, again, that goes down county by county, state by state, it just kind of depends on where you are and, and how they implement that kind of thing during the appraisal process. And I'm not sure if the applicant is here online, I did talk to Pastor Julius the day after the city council meeting and, and last week, so, I'm not sure if they're kind of tapping into his ear and what's he doing. Okay. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive, and I want to thank you and staff for extreme due diligence in, in discovering, I think it was a lot of discovery, this is something unique that we've never had to deal with before, and the fact that you brought up these, these items and clarified for us, I think is, is to our great benefit and advantage into understanding what's happening. I want to be transparent with, with council as well, that I provided some comments and inputs to the city manager the day following our city council meeting, and I want to read those so that it's, it's on the record, but, and you'll note, as I said, I, these are my thoughts, I submitted them the day after council, and I think Mr. Thibodeau has, has responded and answered some of my concerns, but I wanted to read them to you. Item number one, the use of the term "event center" is a misnomer, incorrectly and inappropriately applied to the applicant's project, the reasoning for applying that term is not fully understood nor felt to be justified, I think you've answered that, thank you. Item number two, the applicant's project name clearly identified on the site's plans provided to staff and city council is quote-unquote "proposed Victory House Retreat and Prayer Center." The term "event center" conveys a project with a completely different purpose than what the applicant intends to do on the property. Item number three, the use of the term "event center" served to misinform and mislead individuals contacted within two hundred feet of the project property and led to some of their objections to the property. Item four, the use of the term "event center" served also to mislead some council members as to the intended use of the main building, it will not be an event center but a retreat lodging, thus providing limited occupancy, and not that of how many would or could attend an event, this misleading was evidenced by questioning the future certificate of occupancy, I think you've answered that for us as well, thank you. The applicant clearly stated during the council meeting that he strenuously objected to the use of the term "event center" to staff, but his objections were not apparently accepted. Last item, if possible, this matter should be brought back to council by the next meeting, as was mentioned during the meeting, when doing so, it is hoped to correct terminology, that of the applicant's project be applied, and the use of the term "event center" considered to cease and considered to be deleted or amended in records, and based on what you've just explained to us, going through the possibilities of different names for this project, you've adequately explained that, and I appreciated it, and I think we as now and as the council understand why you were bound to call this an event center, simply because that's what's stipulated, and there was no latitude provided anywhere in black and white that you could call it anything else, so I do appreciate your, your explanation of that. So I just wanted to let council know that, that these are my thoughts that I did convey to, to the city manager, and I wanted to let you know as well, and, and I, I do understand exactly what the pastor intends to do with this, with this property, I think that, if I may, you know, I, I think it would be a good thing for our community, it will be a landmark place for our community, it will attract people to our city that possibly have never been to our city, it does have the opportunity to create jobs in terms of the property tax, I know I made a big deal out of that during the city council meeting, that's still kind of an open question, and that's okay, I mean, that can be resolved at some other time as more research is able to be done, and so what we are facing as a council is being able to understand how this could be very, very beneficial and advantageous to our community in terms of what he is proposing to do as a retreat and prayer center, as he defines it, and as we as a city have to define it as an event center, because we don't have any wiggle room to do anything otherwise. So I just wanted to provide counsel with, with my thoughts on this, and I, and I think it would be something very, very good for our city. Now, seeing I do have some lights set up, Mr. Contreras, please.
I don't totally agree with your assessment there, and let's be clear that those were your thoughts, because you said a few times, you talked as, about "we," and something that would benefit us, and that makes it sound to the public like we're agreeing with your assessment, so to be clear, you're, that's your opinion.
To be clear, that is my opinion, and it's my opinion it'd be advantageous to the city of Duncanville.
Okay, I'd like to first start by asking our city attorney, are there any legal complications with this council requesting conditions on this project?
No, there's no problem with the conditions, if the conditions are related to the use and how that use impacts the neighborhood and the adjacent properties, it's perfectly appropriate to have conditions, there are certain conditions you may not have, one I think that we visited about is the use of alcohol, we can't make a zoning decision based on the use of alcohol, that's been preempted, so if the use is otherwise legal and they meet the requirements of the law to obtain the appropriate license or caterer to use the facility to serve alcohol, they may do so, but we cannot make a zoning decision based on whether or not alcohol's allowed on the premise.
Okay, secondly, the pastor, in regards to what the, the attorney just said, the pastor said here in a public meeting, there would be no alcohol, do you all recall that? Okay, and so now that's, that's changed apparently, is that correct?
Not necessarily, just talking about consumption versus sales is what I was trying to, if I confuse that matter, I apologize, but I was just talking about sales versus consumption, you know, when you bring your own or something, wine being served at a church service, kind of two separate issues, you know, one kind of goes with, and sales is a, is a different matter, just like the attorney just described.
And I, I looked through this, are there, other than the mention of the noise ordinance, which I, I agree with you that we need to work on that, as I remember, it says that if an officer arrives on the scene based on a complaint, it's his discretion to determine whether the noise is at a level that is unreasonable, though exceeds the, the opinions of a reasonable person.
An individual of normal senses, I think, is the.
Normal, normal sensibilities, yeah, so that doesn't fly very well, we're talking about noise and having a tool to protect ourselves against noise problems, so that's something we need to work on. So while we're not calling it an event center any longer, I read in the, in the information provided us, that there can be overnight use in the event center?
Yeah, that was one stipulation that was proposed, or was recommended by, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, just to address that, that potential activity, you know, just assuring via the PD mechanism that, you know, this was an item that was contemplated, and then we have some language that addresses, you know, overnight stay, but then tying that to retreat center guests, so it's not, you know, as if, I think the intent was to not have it be, you know, necessarily more of an Airbnb or hotel-ish type situation, it's really for the purpose of the retreat center guests and them only if somebody's going to stay overnight.
But no one's there to check that, in fact, it's church member guests, it could be some other group that's renting the facility and they're staying the night, is that a possibility?
There'd be potential for that to happen.
I just want to be clear on that. Well, I'll just say that, that the way this whole thing has transpired, while I can appreciate your comments about this being a benefit to the community, I think based on the opposition of those six folks, I haven't heard enough in terms of convincing me that this could turn into something different, I don't know that it will, but I'm, I'm not, by my, my experience, I'm not willing to take that chance, so at this time, I wouldn't be able, I'm, I wouldn't be prepared to support this.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Contreras, Mr. Coontz.
Yeah, my concern is with the, the notices that were sent out, so in those notices, the, the language talked about an event center, right? So before we take any kind of action, would we have to reschedule a hearing on this?
There are ordinance and it's event center, that's what the use is, by definition under our zoning ordinance, they choose to call it a retreat and prayer center, that's their choice, there is no use as a retreat or prayer center in your zoning ordinance, so as Mr. Thibodeau has told you, that we have to apply the use that's defined under the zoning ordinance, so it's an event center, their event's a religious event, okay, they could have a non-religious event if they chose to, there's no obligation for them to have a religious event, if they wanted to have a boys' basketball tournament in the, in that building and it physically get accommodated, they could have one, and so that's why Mr. Thibodeau, as he goes through the zoning ordinance, applied that standard, because that's the standard of our zoning ordinance, so we could not restrict it just to a religious service use.
So, and my question is just whether or not we've misled people in the, the area by sending out a notice that talks about an event center.
But for them, it is an event center unless they're members of that church or that sect for those religious activities.
And.
A church is a church.
My use of that, my use of that term is my opinion as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, seeing no other, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Thibodeau, I wish the applicant was, was here, and it's that, but one of the other questions I have, because it butts to the park, is what, what separates the park from the event center?
So they are utilizing the existing vegetation, along with providing some, some canopy plantings, you can see the trees on the north side, which is facing left, all the, all the green colors that you see, the little dots, that's the existing vegetation that's out there, they're just using, using the natural environment to kind of create a buffer between them in the park, let me bring up an aerial so you can see what that looks like a little bit better.
That's, that's all right, I don't.
You can see that.
I don't need to see that. I, I do have a concern from the standpoint of, and it's really also for their protection too, because people come through there, and, and it's, you know, I'm concerned from people walking from the park into their property as well, and, and other things happening that, that might recall Chief Lavigne's crew to come out and visit.
Is it possible to convey that concern to the applicant?
Sure.
You know, providing which way, whichever way this vote goes, I don't know, but if, if it is approved, Mr. McNabb's concern could be conveyed to the applicant and provide protections for the property as well as the occupants or the participants in the park. Okay, chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve of Mr. Cooks, there's a second.
For a point of clarification, that is with the conditions and ordinance as presented, correct?
Yes.
The other question I have, I'm sorry to interject, is the plans that we want to adopt as part of this, so. Okay.
Okay, I will second the motion, if there's no other, please vote. If there's no other, please vote. The motion is not approved. Please inform the applicant with our regrets.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I do have one other question. Since it was not approved, what could they do if since it is not approved, what could they do without getting an approval from us?
They can develop an extension, a true extension of the existing church. They can do that. Or they can just reapply for another planned development after a certain amount of time. I forgot what the restriction language or if we cap that, I have to review. If there's a time when a project gets or a zoning case gets denied, if you have, I'm used to something like a year before you can reapply for a similar type project. I might have to vet that, but they could either develop according to the zoning that's there and is a true extension of the place of worship, the church, or reapply for new zoning at the appropriate time.
And would you also convey that to them as well?
Oh, for sure. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cooks. Moving on to item 5C. Conduct a public hearing, pren's 2021-19, closed pren's for consideration and action regarding the request of Nancy Kennedy, applicant representing RF and Sons Properties LLC, owner to include a specific use permit, SUP, to allow the use of fuel pumps on Village South Shopping Center, addition Lot 1, approximately 2.88 acres, more commonly known as 1430 South Main Street, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Mr. Thibodeau, yours again, please.
Thank you, sir. Start off by looking at an aerial of the property. You can see it's surrounded by, to the north is residential property actually zoned within a planned development. Immediately to the east of the property is a place of worship with an SUP that speaks to the actual use. To the south across Daniel Dale Road is actually the SUP that was approved for drive-through at the last meeting associated with the pharmacy, medical office, and restaurant development. Catty corner across Main Street in Daniel Dale is, it's now vacant, that structure that you see as you close in on the edge of the image is actually not there, but the pavement is. And immediately to the west across Main Street is a gas station zone, local office retail. The area is generally surrounded by local office retail as well, with the exception of the SUP. Immediately to the east, associated with the religious facility and the planned development associated with the residential development to the north. So this is a request to allow for the use of fuel pumps, just like last time it was a request for the use of drive-through. This is similar, but except, with the exception of drive-through, this is for the use of fuel pumps. So that's what the zoning case is contemplating. The applicant is proposing additional amenities in the form of a landscape, open space area with water fountain, and the plan requires 65 parking spaces to be provided for the various uses that you see on the site plan. And on the plan, you can see the applicant is proposing 75 parking spaces. In looking at the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan map designates the property as Main Street District. This district envisioned high-quality commercial, particularly restaurants, to capitalize on the field house, a desire for a hub of activity, much like the downtown district, but smaller-scale boutique retail is desired, and it's intended to be both neighborhood and auto-oriented. Here's a snapshot of the site plan exhibit. And here is the landscape plan exhibit. Staff wanted to take a moment to thank the applicant for working to getting the plan to this point that you see here. Initially, in late April, early May, we met with the applicant and the development team, and they were proposing a car wash, a lube center, and a convenience store with gas pumps. And we had a conversation in line with comp plan and what, you know, what staff believes the city would like to see if they were going to go for such a use or dial it back a little bit, basically, and what can we utilize to, you know, tackle the potential, you know, negative perception of a fuel pump at this location. And you do that by landscaping and amenitizing the area. So staff wants to thank the applicant and their development team for getting the plan to this point. We have some images we're about to show you that kind of shows what they've done to really, you know, step up the site as far as amenitization and then landscaping goes. And these are those concept renderings. So the top area with that fountain that you just saw is kind of in this northeast corner of the site. So you're standing behind the fountain, looking west towards the existing gas station. The middle view is a view looking east across the site. And then the bottom image is a view looking north as if you were on the Daniel Dale side of the subject property. Here's some images of the proposed elevations, again, just for conceptual purposes. Staff sent out 39 notices to the public, and as of today, two responses have been received in favor and one against. And at the July 26, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval by a vote of four to one of the requested SUP. The one dissenting vote was from Chairman Zilka. He just didn't believe the fuel pumps was the highest best use at this location. And the applicant is also here, once you're ready for them to address the questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. As in what we have done in the past, we will use the same structure for the public hearing on this item as well. So I will, once we open, I will read the citizen inputs, pros and cons at the appropriate time, and then individuals present will be called forward, and then individuals attending virtually will be asked to respond at that point. We're still imposing the 10-minute limit on the hearings. However, based on the number of comments I have, City Secretary, reading these could possibly push us over the 10 minutes. We're just going to have to, as a council, be lenient and understand that that imposition for this unique circumstance, we're going to have to understand, and we'll work on the 10 minutes as best as we can. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, timestamp being 8:30. And the first portion of the public hearing is going to be those in favor. And as I said, I'm going to read comments that I have. I do have some comments in favor or have, I have a citizen comment in favor. And the individual submitting this is Nancy Kennedy, to whom it may concern in regards to the...
That's the... Someone could be on there.
I'm sorry, this was identified to me as a citizen comment.
You want to speak on it or you want to... I just submit one, but I can't...
Okay. All right. Little news information. Okay, seeing that this is the applicant's information, not a citizen comment, then there's no reason for me to read it, but I'm going to be... We will now, as the applicant present, to speak in favor of it, you have 10 minutes to present your comments to us.
Okay. Well, I can just let you know that what we're planning on doing here is it's going to be a Shell or an Exxon.
Mayor.
It's going to have...
Yeah, give us your name.
Sorry, Nancy Kennedy, 202 Sunset Drive, Glen Heights, Texas.
Just a point of order. So the public hearing is for Duncanville residents or anybody who wants to speak in favor?
Anybody that wants to speak.
Anybody that wants to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to, it's going to be either a Shell or an Exxon station. It's going to have a little mom-and-pop quick-serve restaurant, something like a chicken or taco quick-serve. It's going to have a little seating area in the back around the fountain area. We're going to have an office space that's going to be used, something similar to like a little insurance company. And it's going to have really beautiful landscaping, something similar to the shops at Legacy and... So basically, those are my kind of comments that we've been discussing.
Okay, thank you. Any other individuals present who wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and open the portion of...
Mayor Gordon, we have one... Never mind.
We have one citizen's opinion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I will now go...
Mayor, I think there is a public comment in support, though.
Can you identify that, Mr. McNabb? Because they've been compiled for me, then the rest that I have are in opposition.
I believe Mr. Christie offered something in support.
I don't have one from Mr. Christie, from Christie.
In the council packet, Brandy Christie and George Christie, 114 Greystone, 120 Greystone Place, they checked the box in favor, and that's in the council packet. So that can be included as a favorable comment in the record.
Okay, City Secretary, you make that notation, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNabb. Okay, taking on the portion of the public hearing for those not in favor of this item. As I said, I will read these that I have, then open it up to individuals that are present.
Apologize, there is another one from More Business Activity, Safety Concerns, Sell, Varela, 209, 217, looks like Daniel Dale, Duncanville. That was checked in favor as well.
Thank you very much, sir. So City Secretary, please make the annotation of those comments in favor. Thank you. I'm now going to read the comments that I have that are in opposition to the resolution. First one is from Haloise Ford, no address indicated. We do not, by the way, I'm reading these in the order that they were received chronologically by the City Secretary. We do not need another gas station on Main and Daniel Dale. Duncanville need to bring more family-oriented businesses like restaurants and places to Sonia Smith, 1858 Green Tree Lane, 75137. As a Duncanville resident, I'm highly concerned with the proposal for a gas station at the northeast corner of Main Street in Daniel Dale. I would hope the city can work with the developer to design something more aesthetically pleasing and economically viable for both. Something unique to the area that might be a draw could be specialty retail shops featuring home decor, crafts, artisans, artisans and antiques along the lines of the silos in Waco. It could be extended to the vacant spaces at Main Street area and Center Street, transform Duncanville into a destination. Thank you. Another idea to consider would be some sort of amusement/entertainment center for kids, rock climbing, laser tag, video games, maybe a Dave and Buster's-type restaurant. From Emily Briggs, no address indicated. Good morning, my family has been made aware of proposed plans to use the corner of Daniel Dale and Main Street for yet another future gas station. We consider this very redundant. There's one directly across the street, another less than a quarter of a mile on Daniel Dale, pren's 711, another on Main going towards Costco, and then another under the bridge, excluding the Costco one. We have been here 15 years and remember the event space which was there. It's a lovely space that may be used as a dog park, walking trail, bike path, garden, et cetera. I'm not stocked with ideas at this point, but no, we do not need any more gas stations. We need things that invite people to get out and experience our city, whether they are residents or visitors. We have witnessed our city become more stagnant in the last 10 years and need to revive it with amenities geared toward pulling people of all ages in for entertainment, beauty and relaxation, not cheap gas. We hope the board hears the wishes of the residents and can see the beauty we have in our city that just needs a bit of refresher. Thanks for your time. From Holly Boiter, 210 Timothy Trail. I understand development of the corner of Main Street and Daniel Dale is on the horizon. What type of development will be on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting? Please add my name to the list of residents who do not want another gas station. There are at least seven gas stations within a mile of that intersection with one directly across the road. Duncanville has been my home for 25 years, and I love living here. I do feel like the city needs to try to bring in a more diverse type of business, though. We have far too many dollar stores and gas stations. A place to eat or participate in other activities on that corner would be much better received. Thanks for listening to my concerns. Have a good day. From a Martha Salazar, no address indicated. As a citizen of Duncanville, I would like to express my opinion on the proposal plan for Daniel Dale and Main Street. We do not need another gas station. From a Mr. Monty Anderson, no address indicated. Mayor Gordon, I know you have a zoning case coming up this Tuesday. In my opinion, a gas station strip center does not meet the standards or intentions of our comprehensive plan. I've often thought about this site, especially since we are spending a lot of money creating a cutting-edge bike lane road. It would be a shame to waste all those funds doing a project next to the road that did not enhance the city's quality of life. The photo below shows a development of retail, restaurant, and office on the road frontage and a cottage community of housing behind the retail. All of these buildings could be owned by their occupants, just like an owner/occupied neighborhood, you would have a much stronger Main Street corridor. This type of project would follow along the lines of Main Station. The developer of this kind of project can get higher prices per square foot for their land because the sites are small. The locals get to own and build wealth. The city gets a higher tax base per square foot and a resilient project. Everyone wins. Please consider this. Do not waste the work we have started on Main Street in Daniel Dale. Let's do something special. And there have been photos provided. From a Jackie Pena, no address indicated. Please say no to the new gas station proposal on Main Street or anywhere else in Duncanville. Thanks. Jackie Pena, Duncanville resident. From Tamika Brown, no address indicated. Hello, I am against another gas station being added to Daniel Dale and Main Street. There are enough around, and another one is not beneficial to the growth and development of Duncanville. I would like my comments to be read. Another gas station is not needed nor beneficial to the development of the city. Duncanville is behind the time, whereas development is concerned. We need dog parks, upscale restaurants. We need a nicely-built, we need a nicely-built community resource center such as a food pantry, maybe even have a garden there to grow vegetables and fruit, a resource center that would assist those in need. We have tons of panhandlers on the corners, and that could be a place to assist them in having better quality of life. Thank you. From Matt Matern, no address indicated. Please don't put a gas station there. From Francis Hughes, no address indicated. Dear Ms. Downs, I would like to express my negative concern regarding proposed filling station for the location at the northeast corner of Daniel Dale and Main Street. As a 30-plus-year resident of Duncanville, I do not feel like this is the correct use for this property, pren's, which has been vacant since the demise of the putt-putt closed pren's. There are already four gas stations in the proximity of the proposed station, including one directly across the street. Also, what about traffic concerns of vehicles entering, exiting the station as Daniel Dale curves toward Main Street? Do we really want a proliferation of gas stations as we do with fast-food chicken locations on Cedar Ridge between Center Street and Wheatland Road? Seems quite a number of our residents are opposed to this proposed use. I realize that it is... I realize it is probably a daunting task to try to attack new businesses to Duncanville, but I do feel a better effort can be made by our Office of Economic Development. From Mark Graham, no address indicated. When, to those concerned, when considering development of the land at Main and Daniel Dale, please decline allowing for gas pumps to be a part of any commercial development. This is a prime space for making Main Street more attractive and to promote small and locally-owned diverse businesses. If one looks at Main Station right now, then one can see a blueprint of the city, finally embracing some locally-owned businesses that offer something unique. That is what needs to be considered at the location in question, and a gas station development of any kind is a mistake for that area. The city has made the excellent choice of deciding some bike and hike lanes along Daniel Dale Road is going to happen. Consider that fact moving forward. If you aren't thinking that way, why not? We really do not need some big gas station development alongside a road where we are promoting people getting out and getting healthy. Just consider big picture before taking what may be the easiest answer. I see no name on this particular input. Oh, there it is, down there. Okay, Nancy Bell, Nancy Bell. Kristin, I would like to have this message read at council meeting, perenns, citizen comments. Good evening, council. A lot of dialogue has been going back and forth on next door. I think I counted 30-plus with regards to putting another gas station on a corner in Duncanville. Monty Anderson placed a rendering of what that corner could look like, and I really like it a lot, and it does keep within the original concept of Main Street. Why is it that we get people out to vote, but they can chatter on ND? I presume that means next door. Even though I am not in that district, I feel that it is high time that we and other districts look at the overall picture for Duncanville and not just improvements in our districts. Personally, another change should be to get rid of the tire place on the corner of Main and Center Street. It is an eyesore. I missed the meetings but will not be attending until the city declares open for all meetings. I am, however, watching from home. Sincerely, Nancy Bell, 46-year resident of Duncanville. Stay safe, wear a mask, get vaccinated. From Tessa Gonzalez, no address indicated. I'm against fuel pumps at Main and Daniel Dale. There are so many gas stations less than a mile away from that location. That location would better serve as something community members could enjoy, like a senior citizen center or an activity okay place for children. We don't need another gas station in Duncanville. Thank you, Tessa Gonzalez. From Alicia Smith, no address indicated. Please no gas station there or a pizza chicken place or a dollar store. Please put something nice there or leave it vacant. Thank Alicia Smith. From Betty Taylor, no address indicated. Ms. Downs and Duncanville City Council, as a community, we can do better, and this starts with you as elected officials. As a citizen of this community, would like, I would like to express my sincere displeasure in the choices this council. Make it sense that you would consider putting another service station within a block and a half radius for a total sum of six. There has to be more careful consideration into attractions here in Duncanville. This will not help to grow our tax base and generate much-needed revenue for the community. Please consider a board to help with bringing more attractions to Duncanville opposed to your citizens patronizing surrounding communities. Thanks in advance, Betty Taylor. Joyce McCormick, no address indicated, no to gas station on Main and Daniel Dale. Resident since 1977. From Leslie Segovia, no address indicated. Good morning. During the council meeting today in regards to approving a gas station on Main Street and Daniel Dale Road, I would disagree as a person who lives on that street. We have at least five nearby gas stations from here, and there is already a gas station on the corner of that exact intersection. We do not need an additional one across the street. The city of Duncanville is very outdated and needs to be more progressive. Main Street buildings are old-school looking and outdated. Maybe the money could be used for something to make the city better-looking or something actually needed, like a better recreational area. Armstrong Park needs to be updated. My daughter tripped on a nail and fell, which scarred her chin. The appearance all throughout the city needs updating. Thank you for hearing out my opinion. From Nick Corchesny. I will not be able to attend the town meeting this evening, but I do have thoughts about some of the issues being addressed regarding the possible gas stations. Zero need for this. New businesses are necessary for Duncanville to ever, to ever have a hope of thriving again, but more gas stations on property that could be used to generate much more tax dollars for the city would be a much smarter and wiser use of that real estate. There may be some differences and a few end goals between the city and developer, but the, but there are shared goals, high-value property, high income, and a community excited about something new in that space, perenns, and frankly, along most street in Duncanville, closed perenns, would equal more tax dollars being spent. Developer gets his money and the city gets theirs. If they can't work together, then either get the developer to move to a place that'll take their bad lazy ideas, or we need to find someone working for the city's economic development and planning that'll do a better job of planning. Good ideas in collaboration with developers willing to spend money here. Money needs to go to the properties that are abandoned to fix those up. You'll never get worthwhile businesses here while next door is shuttered. There should be ways to incentivize developers to put their businesses in a place that just needs a little TLC. Ellen M. Murphy, 242 Cliffwood, 75116. I am against adding additional gas stations within Duncanville specifically at the corner of Main and Daniel Dale. While there are many reasons for my opinion, the top three are: one, if we're looking at revitalizing Main Street, does a gas station help accomplish that goal? I don't believe it does. Two, there's a gas station currently across the street of where this proposed gas station will be, thereby it will not be adding any additional benefits to the neighborhood. Three, as we move away from fossil fuels, perenns, not the immediate future, but somewhere down the line, closed perenns, this will become just another closed-down business that will sit there as an eyesore, and who will pay for remediation of the property? While I do understand the desire of the city of Duncanville to increase the tax base, adding more fast food places, gas stations, strip malls, et cetera, has a detrimental effect on the town as a whole. Are we staying within the visions of how we want our town to be known? Respectfully, Ellen M. Murphy, 242 Cliffwood Drive, 275116. Patricia Ebert, 115 South Greenstone Lane, 75116. City Secretary Downs, please have the mayor or as designate read my public comments during the public hearing. Agenda 5C, conduct a public hearing, perenns 2021-19, closed perenns. I vote no to a gas station at 1430 South Main. Duncanville has dozens and dozens of gas stations right now. Why grant a SUP to one more gas station? I commend the developer on the proposed beautiful water fountain. The city needs to focus on existing gas stations, code and clean up the rundown gas stations, and we citizens should continue to patronize the gas stations that are up to code, clean and convenient. Patricia Ebert. That concludes the written citizen comments that I have in opposition to the, to the proposal for an SUP for a gas station. As we are attempting to do, I did hear the 10-minute bell go off, but now any individuals present who wish to speak in opposition to this, please come forward. And please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Dale Sliger, 1405 South Main, Duncanville, Texas. I probably, of all the people I've heard speak, am the closest in proximity. There is, first, I served on the board for our city planning, our long-range planning. We spent a year, plus or minus a few weeks or months. I don't believe this meets the criteria. There's a lot of green open space in that area. There's a white farmhouse that belongs to the Shephields. They were there since 1947 that I know about. I moved to Duncanville on Main Street, December the 7th, 1947, 74 years. I would love to see us develop some of that green space. While I love entrepreneurs that want to build businesses, I was one of those in my past. I believe this is not the right place. We, we have a large green space there. We have a green space across the street. This is very close to my home. There are two homes that sit on the property at 1405 and 1407 that are better than $350,000 at the current market value, and I don't believe this enhances our property. So I'm gonna ask that you deny this.
Thank you, Ms. Sliger. Any other individuals present who wish to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record, please. And we are under a 10-minute time limit.
Okay, my name is Yara Cruz, 1903 Silver Creek Place. So as a teenager, since I haven't seen any other teenager here, I personally, for example, I like going out on Fridays, have fun, something, you know, healthy, I guess. And here in Duncanville, I can't really do that. The only thing I see is parks and fast food restaurants. And what if I want to have fun without eating fast food or being out at a park at 10:00 PM? You know, I believe that maybe we should add something new to the city. It could be maybe an arcade, I don't know, I personally love arcades, but, you know, I feel like it would be something new for the city and innovative, per se. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other individuals present who wish to stand in opposition? Seeing none, we will close this portion of the public hearing and open it to, I'm sorry, any individuals on virtual that wish to speak in opposition.
We do have one. IT, can you please turn on Mr. Kadim Collins' microphone? Kadim, please state your name and address again, and you may speak.
Thank you. Kadim Collins, 211 Martin Luther Circle. I'm against this proposal. You know, I think the, the team behind sourcing this, I think we gotta think a little bigger, right? I think, you know, the, the space can be used for something else, quite frankly. I, I, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse. We heard the public comments. It's, it's clear what the constituents think. But I, you know, ultimately, I think Duncanville needs some sort of entertainment space that attracts all ages, you know, brings in the revenue that the city wants, and accomplishes a lot of things. But I, I don't think a gas station fits the bill. I think it was a good effort, but I, I don't think that's the right use of the land. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other individuals from virtual meeting?
No, sir.
Alright, we'll close the opposition portion of the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Contreras, second by Mr. McNabb Burnett. Please vote to close the public hearing. Thank you, a public hearing is closed at 8:57. At this time, as we are conducting public hearings, we're gonna open the, the discussions to members of the council. Mr. Contreras.
And I don't for a second not listen to...
Could you move your mic a little closer, please?
I don't for a second not listen to those voices. I've been a proponent since I've come on this council of new innovative ideas and trying to improve our city in a manner that serves the young families and newcomers that wanna, wanna see Duncanville be something different. I was a strong supporter of the develop, early days of development of Main Street. What I don't see here, though, is, is where are those people that only jump out when the, and I'm talking about developers? Where are the, the people that are into development? Where are they, why didn't they grab that land and develop it into something when they had the opportunity? I mean, that, that property, and I think the only one here that could really tell us would be Ms. Sliger. I, I don't know that there's ever been a structure on that, that site. And so, I, I used to say to people when they would be opposed to some buildings coming up, you know, so since beginning, the beginning of the time, that's been a vacant lot, and we have an opportunity for development. And that's what we hired Gus for. He may or may not have been here when this was first initiated, this conversation about the gas station, but while I really hear those people's opinions, and I respect them, I'm always aggravated that, well, then why didn't someone come along sooner and lay claim to that property for those things that they want? And if we were to vote down the gas station, how long is that lot gonna stay empty? I've seen a number of lots around town where this conversation was held by previous councils, and had, had the development not gone ahead and, and occurred, 20 years later, I believe those lots would have still been empty. So there's sometime we have to look at it and say, well, let's, let's grab onto something when it's available. So I, I've still got mixed feelings. I'd like to hear what the rest of y'all have to say, but, you know, I'm hoping that this will encourage people to start to work, seek out developers, so that we can get ahead of the game instead of saying no just because somebody's come along and offered reasonable development. I'm, I'm anxious to hear what y'all have to say.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, council, of our comments during this discussion are five minutes, and we can come back to you, but we are, you know, five minutes per, and then we'll come back if you need any additional comments. Mr. Harvey, Mayor Pro Tem Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all well know, we, in this community, don't have much in the way of available land. And so, in my estimation, that makes what little we do have that much more valuable. And I think that it is important that we maximize what little we have. It would be a totally different situation if we were like some of the other cities and had available land for development, but we don't. So we have to be picky. I cannot support this.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Koontz.
Just in response to Councilman Contreras' concerns, you know, I'm listening to a lot of the comments. It sounds like many citizens would, would still prefer the vacant lot to any kind of development. I had a question for the city planner, so what's, from a city, city planning point of view, what's, what's the necessity of a gas station at that location? Is that something that we need at that location?
I really don't have any language that speaks directly to that question, just that a gas pump in association with, with a convenience store requires SUP approval. There's a list of items that we put, I think we talked about this last time, with the SUP across the street. There's the list of items to consider, you know, the, the bullet point list, so I would just recommend contemplating that language and associated with, with this proposal.
And then, Mayor, there was a, there was a public comment that I think you missed because he had some questions in it, from Kadim Collins? Okay.
He was the individual that spoke.
Okay. And I'll come back around because I might take more than five minutes.
Mr. Cooks.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I guess I wanna start off with just really calling the, I'm not sure if it's the developer or the owner of the land.
I'm the applicant. I'm the representative.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, can you come up for a second? First, thank you very much for, I guess, for your person, applicant purchasing the property. I understand it was purchased back in '21 or last year, so we appreciate that. When you applied, did you have an opportunity to look at our comprehensive plan and meet with our economic development director?
That you may have to address with, I've got two guys on Zoom, aren't they still available? David Reach and Sean Dandell.
We need you speaking into the mic, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Please speak into the mic.
David Reach is our engineer, and Sean Dandell is our contractor.
While we're waiting, just let us know whenever we end. I'll just keep going. While we're waiting on them, one of the things I looked at is that you mentioned Exxon is on your drawing or your rendering. Is that a closed deal with Exxon?
Most likely it'll be Shell or Exxon. We deal with both brands, so we haven't gotten that finalized yet for either one.
Mayor and council, while they have a representation, we talked about the use, not who the applicants are.
That's right. All right, thank you. All right, so, well, I was looking at still the gas tank of the use, and when I look at that, I'm still thinking there's a use on Main, which is the technical, a use of Chevron, which is across the street. There's an Exxon that's right around the corner from it. So that's why I was questioning the use of the tank itself being near. So are they ready?
We have David on. IT, can you please allow their microphone?
Honorable City of Duncanville, David Recht. My address, 4136 Creekdale, Dallas, Texas. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. We have been working with Mr. Thibodeau and the staff to try and come up with a development that's as conducive to some of the concerns we've heard, certainly empathize and hear all the opposition to the project and relate to that. What I can say is that, you know, Nancy, Shane, myself, the design team have been trying to collaborate with city staff and provide product. We've taken out car washes, we've taken out other uses and tried to do something that would be viable. To the previous point made, we feel the economics of this would work with fuel sales. Without, well, I certainly think some of the ideas and land uses and appeals to open space are very admirable and can relate to that, is that the economics doesn't work. So again, trying to come to a conclusive use for this that's financially viable, that would increase tax receipts for the city, and then those tax receipts can be repurposed toward other endeavors, I think is the best win-win here. I do worry that if there's not, you know, while these other uses seem amenable, I don't see that they're viable, whereas I think fuel sales is the engine that can catalyze the economic growth at this intersection and be used to repurpose for other things that exist in conjunction with these sales tax receipts. But again, very, I'm happy to be part of this discussion. I'm glad to be here, and certainly we're listening very hard, long and hard, to everything that's being said and can relate to that.
Mayor, the public hearing's closed. He can, you ask him a question, he needs to answer it, and the answer is yes or no. Did you look at the comp plan prior to, that was your question, right?
That is correct.
So I want you, I want you, I want the, I want the speaker to understand, the public hearing's closed. He asked a question, it's Q and A.
Yes, sir.
It's not a soapbox for them to advocate for or against anything.
I understand. Thank you.
And I actually lost track of the question because it's been going on for a while, so thank you for that. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, then, I think as my members are closing down, let me just, thank you very much, Nancy. As I look at the comp plan, in order, since you made that statement, Mr. Thibodeaux, would you share with me on the comp, on our comp plan, if gas stations are there for that opportunity zone in that comp plan?
It does not outright talk about gas stations. Last time we talked about...
Pumps. Let me just say...
Pumps, yeah. Last time we talked about, could have the note, what does auto-oriented development mean? Where staff talked about uses like drive-throughs and fuel pumps, that's not to be confused with developments that are oriented in a way where the buildings and parking really accommodates a vehicle coming in, parking, walking to normally the back or side portion of that property. That's what that speaks to. But to answer your question directly, the comp plan does not address fuel pumps in the Main Street District, I do not believe.
Let me ask my last question, and I'll conclude. And I want to ask Mr. Gus Garcia a question, is looking at this pumps that are proposed as an S U P, if that didn't fit, what other, what other part of the comp plan relates to what we're looking at on this corner?
Gus Garcia, Economic Development. To answer your question, council member, no, I have not visited with this developer or met with him on discussions with this development. So the areas of the development that would meet the comprehensive plan are the shops and the retail components of this development. The gas station, as Mr. Thibodeau stated, would not be in the comprehensive plan designed for the Main Street District. Auto-oriented speaks to pedestrian access, auto access, egress, ingress, places that would make it conducive to allow automobiles to access the facility, not for the services that would be provided to automobiles. So our, my assessment is that this particular development would not meet that code or would not meet the comprehensive plan's request. I would ask that the applicant be given the opportunity to meet with economic development to maybe come up with some solutions that economic development might provide that would provide the catalyst for making this development successful if the council chooses or makes that recommendation.
Thank you. And by the way, some of those, some of the stations that's in there does not meet the complaint as well. Some of the uses does not meet it as well. But thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Counsel, you know, Mr. Garcia, did I just understand you correctly that you have not had an opportunity to meet with the developer on this project?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, I think, I'm hearing all the comments, which are cogent and with great merit, both in favor and opposition, and understanding the issues about the comp plan, and we have this model, highest and best use of land, I think it may be wise for us as a council to table this and allow Mr. Garcia to meet with the developer, because the developer, David, I don't recall his last name, was very clear in saying that the economics of this project are not supported without gasoline. However, I think if there's an opportunity for Mr. Garcia as our development of economic, our economic development director to meet with the applicant and discuss some future options, it might be the wisest move for us at this time. Because there's a lot of discussion, I know, Mr. Koontz, you did want to say something else. But I am suggesting that we seriously consider tabling this and allowing further discussions to go on, which could be fruitful. I believe they could be fruitful. So, Mr. Koontz, I know we're coming back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So something else I'm hearing, just since we're talking about the tax receipts and sales, is that it sounds like our constituents also are concerned with quality of life and those sorts of things. And in our report here, it talks about zoning and land use. It talks about the states that in consideration and application for an S U P, the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council shall consider whether the proposed use is, and there are several bullet items, one of which is consistent with the goals and objectives of the City of Duncanville. And just again, just listening to the comments made, that it may not be consistent with the objectives of the city. And I'm glad that the representative is here tonight, so that they could hear some of the comments that are being made and go back and have these conversations with economic development and planning and try to put something together that does meet those goals and objectives. Another point, it says that it will not be detrimental to the general health, safety, and welfare of the community, and I'm not sure that this proposal does meet that standard. It says that it would stabilize and improve property values within the City of Duncanville. I don't believe it meets that standard, and someone already commented on that. Would strengthen and help diversify the economy of the City of Duncanville. And again, all the comments about all the fuel stations we have, it doesn't seem like it diversifies the economy. But that being said, I believe we have a, you know, just, we as a council have an opportunity here to show what we're about, and we've heard what people think, for and against, and we should act on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koontz. I see, going back to Mr. Contreras, is that correct?
I think I was first.
I'm sorry?
I think I'll turn it on first.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Mr. Cooks, then?
Thank you. Well, we'll back to, back to the number that was against. Actually, I wanted to, I wanted to correct that number. 400 people was against, based upon looking at the comprehensive plan. And so it's not just people that spoke up, it's the time to put, it's the people that put their time and effort in listening to what our city should look like. And so if you look back at the comprehensive book, it tells you, based upon the S U P and based upon what I was looking in our comprehensive plan, that says no to me. And then, secondly, Mayor, I disagree with tabling this for the reason of, I'm not going to change my mind on having a pumps in that locations. So therefore, we're ready, I'd like to make a motion that we decline this and then request that the applicant go back and meet with Gus, our economic development director, for future use, but definitely get the pumps that's been asked to be S U P off the table.
I have an opportunity, as the mayor, to not accept that motion because I...
I don't think so, Mayor.
Yes, I do.
City Attorney, would you give us a...
By our procedure, by our procedure, if I feel the discussion is not closed, I can ask for a vote of the council to accept whether that motion goes forward or to deny that we close the motion or deny this discussion with the motion. I have that opportunity. It's written in our rules of procedure.
You didn't ask for that, Mayor. You simply said you wanted to postpone it. I'm simply saying no. So I'm asking for the city attorney to give us a...
I was offering to the council, I was offering to the council a suggestion to table this to allow economic development to speak with the applicant further about the project. You're making a motion to move, and I don't believe that we have discussion closed because I still see that Mr. Contreras has a comment. And so I have an opportunity, by our rules of procedure, to propose to council or to have, ask for a vote to council to allow Mr. Cooks' motion to go forward or to deny his motion to go forward and still keep this discussion open.
Mayor, you have to recognize the motion. If you don't want to accept it, a point of order could be raised and that point of order would be stated that you made a motion, correct?
That's correct.
And so it must stand for a second. If you're, if you overrule his motion, then the point of order would be to challenge your ruling by taking a vote of the body.
And let me, let me rescind that motion to allow Mr. Contreras, since he had his light on after me, let me remove that motion for now to allow Mr. Contreras to speak, and then I'd like, I'll make a motion after then.
So you withdrawing your motion?
I withdrawn the motion to after Mr. Contreras has finished, or any other council member finished.
Okay. My question's for Gus. You've, knowing that you have not been directly involved in discussions about the development of this property, is, put me in a different place about this project. Because it sounds like there's, there's some hope that you could offer suggestions and recommendations, and my question is just simply, how strongly do you feel that there are other opportunities that you may present to the owner of the property that would be financially feasible for someone that developed it?
Gus Garcia, Economic Development. Well, to answer your question, council member, this is obviously a hard corner within the City of Duncanville. The City of Duncanville is an excellent opportunity for any developer looking to develop. With regard to the economic development and the incentives that would be afforded to any developer, those would be subject to the board and, of course, this council. But I do believe there are several opportunities for this hard corner that exists on a main, literally a Main Street, and one of our major thoroughfares, which is Daniel Dale Road. So from an economic development standpoint and a developer's standpoint, this is a prime location for development. So I would think there's excellent opportunity to find a solution.
And after hearing all the comments from the citizens, do some of your ideas fit with...
Mayor and council, this is a land use case, not an economic development, so I would caution you to be careful because you may be writing a check you can't cash. So let's not go there. Stick to the comp plan, stick to the use, whether you like it or you don't like it, and whether it meets the council's policy consideration.
Was my first question acceptable?
Barely.
So to answer your question in those regards, there are many options within the comprehensive plan that have been identified that would fit within this development.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's for the attorney. I respect council member Cook's right to make his motion. My question is, if, if we, if we deny it, that land use, then how, how long will it, would it be before the applicant could come back with a different land use? The reason why I say that is because, you know, the whole thing about the winning side can do it within a certain period, the losing side has to wait a little longer.
They could file, they could file an application tomorrow for a different land use.
Great, 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 because potentially that could happen, so.
Mr. Contreras, your light is still on. Going back to Mr. Cooks.
So going back to, going back to, again, the question that I'm bringing up, and that is Mr. Garcia, and meeting with Mr. Garcia on this S U P for the land use of gas tanks, unless he's going to go different than what the comprehensive plan is saying, his opportunity to speak to the applicant won't be to, say, put gas tanks on that property, because it goes against the comp plan. So I know we're saying, you know, send it back to our economic development director, and I do, I do agree with that, but that is after we decline that we do not want to have pumps on that land. So I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we...
Mr. Hager, you have a comment, sir, first.
My only concern, if we're done with debate...
I believe we're done with debate.
I'm making a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we decline this S U P for pumps on the shopping center.
We have a motion to decline the S U P, and we have a second by Mayor Protem Harvey. Please vote. Now, wait a minute, so you know, you vote yes, you're declining the S U P, because you're in favor of the motion. If you vote no, you're in favor of the S U P and rejecting the motion. We all clear?
We were until you said all that.
Well, that goes back to always stating in the positive, you're either for pumps or against pumps. You stated in the negative, so yes means no and no means yes.
That is correct. That's what I understand.
An affirmative vote is a vote yes for the negative. That's why I'm clarifying.
So, so, City Attorney, I'm voting, I'm voting for no for the pumps on the land. If that's the case, now, I don't want to get this confused.
And your motion is what, Madam Secretary?
You made a motion to deny. So if we vote in favor, we vote yes.
Okay, let the, let the City Attorney finish up.
That's right. You made a negative motion to deny, so you have to vote yes to deny the pumps.
That's, that's all I was saying, voting yes to deny the pumps.
That's what I said.
All right. Now, you actually said it differently, but you got a question there.
Mr. Koontz.
So we're not voting for what's on the agenda right now, we're voting for the motion that Mark made.
We are voting on what's on the agenda.
The motion is on the agenda. He's just stated in a negative...
Mayor, you, I thought I heard the attorney, please.
Let me do this.
Why don't you just make a motion to approve?
Get us... Because the way you've designed the motion, it's going to cause confusion among your colleagues.
I think we just called it...
And because you make a motion...
We all understood until you guys started changing it up. Okay, so I'll follow your direction. You're asking if I make the motion to approve the S U P, but by voting no, I'm making sure that we're saying no, that we don't want the land, is that correct?
Yes, you are correct.
All right, go ahead. I'll, I'll take that motion and make sure I get no for...
Say it again.
The motion is to approve the item as posted on the agenda, and it would have to receive a second from Mr. Harvey, who seconded the last motion.
Mr. Harvey, do you still second the motion to approve?
No, I do not.
Okay, there has been a motion to approve the S U P, is there a second? We have a motion to approve the S U P by Mr. Vera Cruz. Please vote.
So green means you want pumps, red means you don't want pumps.
That's, that's what I'm thinking about.
And for that, I went to law school.
The motion is not approved, no pumps.
Yes, thank you. Lord have mercy.
Now, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to say something, you stop me if I can't.
Okay.
Going on to what we believe is an opportunity for this land... Going on to what we believe is an opportunity for this land. Mr. Garcia, Mr. Garcia, I don't think you should leave at this moment.
Well, why don't, why don't you direct the city manager-
City manager, would you please ask the economic development director to return, please? Just ask him to return to his seat.
No, no. The charter says that you have providence over me, city manager and the municipal judge. So, if you or the council want to direct a city employee who works for the city manager, you need to direct her to do certain things, and she'll decide who on her staff does what.
City manager, would you please request the economic developer, director of economic development, to remain in chambers?
No, that's not what I'm referring to, Mayor. You're about to instruct a city employee to work or not work with someone when that's really the manager's job, and so you need to direct her that you would like her and her staff to meet with the applicant to talk about economic development for that corner. That's okay, but you can't tell the police chief to go out and arrest somebody. You can't tell the fire chief to go out and fight a fire, because the charter says that the city manager should be directed by the mayor and council, not the individual employees.
Then I, as the mayor-
You as a member of the council, yes, sir.
As a member of the council, and requesting the city manager to conduct discussions with the economic development director in terms of the future best and highest use of this land.
Yes, sir.
And return those, that information to council at the appropriate time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And, Mr. City Attorney, your comments in keeping us out of jail are always appreciated. Night is not over. We are on item 5D. Consider appointments to various boards and commissions, including Board of Adjustment, City Planning and Zoning Commission, Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation Board, Prenz DCEDC, Duncanville Neighborhood Vitality Commission, Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, Library Advisory Board, Multicultural Social Engagement Partnership, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Sign Control Board, TIF, Prenz, Tax Increment Financing, Reinvestment Zone Number One, Closed Prenz, and Tri-City Animals Control Board. Council members, you have been provided with the list of individuals, if I can find it. And what we intend to do, I will read the names of those that we are intended to be appointed to our various boards and councils, and we will vote on the entire slate of appointees, not voting on individual boards or commissions. Understood? Okay, I will continue to read then. City Planning and Zoning Commission, appointment for one year, 2021 to 2022, Edward Stith. Appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Tom Schein, Elias Rodriguez, and Javar Avery. Zoning Board of Adjustment, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Yolanda Columbus, Louis Fulbright is alternate, alternate number one, and Stephanie Rutherford is alternate number two. Park and Recreation Advisory Board, appointment for one year, 2021 to 2022, Kim Malone. Appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Jose Stevens, Pam Rogers, Janice Preston, Rallo Thompson. Library Advisory Board, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Michael Kreitsberg, Jill Gilbert, Jennifer Cole. Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Diane Dillard, Justin Reese Edwards, Mary Ann Taylor, Jose Peralas. Sign Control, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Terry Popham, Howard Fields. Duncanville Community Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC, appointment for one year, 2021 to 2022, Linda Lydia. Appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Michael Grace, Charles Reed, Jared Davis. The Tax Increment Financing Zone Number One, the TIF, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Cassandra Brown, Michael Grace. Duncanville Neighborhood Vitality Commission, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Felicia Colors, Robin Felder, DeMonica Gooden, Walter Rim. For the Multicultural Social Engagement Partnership, appointment for two-year terms, 2021 to 2023, Latrina Barrett, Don Johnson, Mildred Inez Clark, Joseph Cole, Noella Waivers. For the Regional Animal Shelter Board, appointment for two-year term, 2021 to 2023, Edward Priest. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. McNabb, seconded by Mr. Mayor Protem Harvey, please vote. Thank you, council, the appointments are unanimously approved.
Mayor, excuse me one second. I think it'd be a good time to remind the public that are viewing and that are here that we do still have many openings.
I was about to do that.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Yes, just so everyone is aware, that we do have some vacancies on some of our boards and commissions. City manager and city secretary are aware of those vacancies, and there will be advertisements coming out to fill those slots as soon as possible. So, yes, thank you, Mr. Contreras, for that contribution. Okay, we have no staff and board reports, we have not had an executive session yet. So, at this time, we're going to recess city council at 9:31. And if city council would move into the briefing room?
We're just going to recess, recess the regular session.
I can't hear you, sir.
We're not going to adjourn, you're just recessing, correct?
That's what I said, we're going to recess city council. Didn't I say that? Before, and we are moving on to item number 5E, take in a necessary action as a result of executive session. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the motion?
Mayor and council, thank you. I would ask the council to consider a motion to authorize city manager, designee and city attorney to make the required deposit of funds as awarded by the special commissioners in clause number CC-21-0021, City of Duncanville versus Tommy Nguyen, and take possession of the property, subject to, subject of said clause and entry of judgment in accordance with the law.
Is there a second? Oh, first is there a motion?
So moved.
Then it's second.
Okay, so moved by Mr. McNabb, seconded by Mayor Protem Harvey. Please vote by roll call.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against? Councilmember McNabb, for or against?
We're, we're open for question.
We're open.
Councilmember Koontz, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
Against.
Okay. Councilmember Contreras, for or against?
For.
Mayor Protem Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. The motion is carried by a vote of six to one, thank you. Seeing no staff or board reports, we're moving to adjournment at 9:45.